Okay, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock and so we will officially call to order our council meeting. You will notice that we are in a virtual format this evening. As a result of the power outage earlier today, there have been some technical issues with the sound system in council chambers and so we've made the decision to go virtual as we did for almost two years during the pandemic, but look forward to coming back in our regular in-person meeting at our next council meeting. Okay, so with that, we will kick things off. So Segol, ani buju endio wachea kwekwe. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So we were just meeting in committee the whole closed meeting. Prior to our open session tonight, we did discuss three different items. First, the future redevelopment of Kingston Health Sciences Centre, the Leon Centre contract and an update on ongoing legal proceedings. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by councillor Ridge, seconded by councillor Stephen, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, next we'll move to the approval of the addits. On our addits this evening, we have a motion of condolence, a motion of recognition and so communications. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the addits, please? Moved by councillor Tozo, seconded by councillor Amos. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, thank you. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Bow.
Everybody hear me okay? Thank you, your worship, and through you, I, Ryan Bowden, the councillor of the corporation, city Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause two, report seventy-four. As an employee of utilities Kingston, may we perceive that I have a conflict in these matters insofar as they relate to this Kingston with respect to clause two, report seventy-four, because it has been duly submitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I, Jeff McLaren, of the council of the corporation of the city of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of the Kingston Front Night Housing Corporation. Based on integrity commissioner reports and their advice, I am declaring a conflict because of my business being similar market and in similar proximity.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no further disclosures of pecuniary interest, we will then move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have I believe, two delegations on our agenda. So first up, I will invite Graham Forsyte, Chair of the Kings, Kinsman Dream Home, who will appear before council to speak to clause one, report number seventy-three from the CAO with respect to the Kinsman Dream Home contribution. Just a note to our delegations that you have up to five minutes to speak and then we will open up the floor to questions from council. So with that, Mr. Forsyte, welcome, and I will pass the floor over to you.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? I'm, I literally had to pull over and do this in my car. We're really going wild here with our dream home, so I'm actively out working with some other groups. I just, I won't take five minutes. I just wanted to thank the council for entertaining our request. I believe it's been tabled for bringing back the donation of, I believe, let me just check my notes. Thirty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. I just want to tell everybody, you know, we've been doing this for well over thirty years. Every cent that comes into the dream home for Kingston is one hundred percent put back into the public area, right? Right back into Kingston's hands. We have no paid positions. We're strictly a bunch of volunteers who do this just because it's the right thing to do. Since taking on the program myself three years ago, we've managed to continue to double it each year. And this year, we're shooting to bring back a million dollars in the community. Our last dream home was a complete sellout. That was in two thousand twenty-two. And we raised six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And we really can't do that without the help of Kingston community and people. We have a great, great sort of fan following, if you will. So we really appreciate that council entertain and possibly just give us back those funds and we can put them back in the community into to one of our charities that we've been helping over the last few years. That's, that's about everything from me, guys. I really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Forsyte. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Forsyte, I will let you get back to building the dream home. Thanks.
Take care.
Okay, so with that, we'll move to our second delegation. We'll invite Rebecca Murphy, Chief Administrative Officer from Loyalist Township, Carrie Lamb, Recreation and Facilities Manager from Loyalist Township, Remy Masurani, Special Project Engineer from Loyalist Township, and Laurie McFarlane, Director of Community and Customer Services, also from Loyalist Township. I shall hand the floor over to you folks. And again, you have five minutes and then we will open up to questions from council. Thanks very much.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. My name's Rebecca Murphy. I'm the CAO for Loyalist Township. I'm here tonight in further to report seventy-four, which is before you with regard to our Loyalist Aquatic Centre in a partnership with the city of Kingston. We want to give you a high level overview of what our aquatic facility, our new aquatic facility and our recreation centre rehab renewal project look like. We see this proposal as an proposed partnership with Kingston as an efficient and cost-effective regional solution to provide much-needed infrastructure and programming for both of our communities. So I thank you for your anticipated support and look forward to a long-lasting partnership with the city of Kingston. I believe Carrie will be presenting next.
Thanks, Rebecca. If we could have the next slide, please. Thank you very much. So just a general overview for those who are not familiar with the facility. It is in Amherstview, which is fairly close to the border of the city of Kingston. Within the facility, there is a single pad arena, the public library for Amherstview, as well as the aquatic facility. But this evening, we're going to talk to you about the reconstruction of the aquatic facility itself. So if I could have the next slide, please, we'll go into some specifics related to the construction of this facility. So specifically, what are we building? Previously, it was a smaller facility. We are expanding. We have outgrown the previous facility. We are moving to an eight-lane, twenty-five-meter lap pool that will be FINA certified, we're hoping. That's the goal. It will be a competition pool, but it will meet the community need. So the goal will be that the shallow end of the pool or the depth of the pool will be large enough that we can maximize community programming, such as swimming lessons and programming for our older adults, for instance. We want to make sure that that shallow end is large enough that we can deliver programming from a community basis. It'll also have a proposed one-meter diving board as well as all of the accessibility features, i.e. a ramp for entry into the large pool. It'll also have a leisure pool, which will give us the ability to meet the needs of our smaller patrons, our young children, as well as be able to adjust the temperature in that pool, so it can be a warm water pool. It will have accessibility features as well as ramp, stair entries, hydrotherapy bench, and it will also have some fun water features associated to it. Around the perimeter of the building, there will be seating around the facility as well for competitions, as well as for parents and spectators to be able to watch their children while they're in the pool. It'll also have a wet classroom, which will be able to host leadership courses. We all know at this point in the industry, we are in need of more trained professionals in the aquatic industry, so the wet classroom will enable us to run more leadership courses right off the deck and will also meet the needs of running more competitions at the same time. And then the old aquatic facility will transition into the change room facilities, so it will have a universal change room as well as ladies and men's change rooms. So the universal change room will be what most people refer to it as a family change room. Again, meeting all the accessibility needs throughout the facility. And if I could have the next slide, we'll talk a bit about the programming of the facility and how we'll meet the residents' needs through programming. So within the facility, this picture is a concept at this point drawing. Remy's going to talk to you a bit about where we're at with the project and design. However, from a programming perspective, we are looking at how we maximize use of the facility. The aquatic centre, the aquatic centre itself will be a community-based pool, meeting the needs across the region. We recognize that it is a need within the region, not just the city of Kingston, but within our township and within the county. We have a capacity to host competitions that we recognize our local swim club is excited about hosting, but it also has an economic impact on the region itself. We will be most likely open three hundred and sixty days a year, twelve to sixteen hours a day, is the goal with programming. We'll be looking at everything from swimming lessons and leadership courses, as I already mentioned, as well as your aqua fitness. So this is things like lap swimming, aqua fitness classes, baby and me, these types of programs, public swims, senior swims, those types of traditional programs, as well as we'll work with the local school board on things like Swim to Survive, swim team programming. Local swim clubs are always looking for more pool time and as well, we are home to Special Olympics swimming at the facility. And then we'll also be looking at rentals, things like birthday parties and private rentals. So that gives you a really quick snapshot on what we'd be looking to deliver within the facility, and I will pass it on to Remy.
And just, just a note, you got about thirty seconds left.
All right, I'll be extremely quick. If I could get the next slide, please. From a project delivery perspective, we are using an integrated project delivery model to deliver this. And we have a number of highly qualified consultant and trade partners helping us out. So we're currently in the validation phase of the project where we're refining our designs and our estimates and developing construction and phasing plans. As it stands, the overall budget for the project right now is forty-nine point seven million dollars. Most of this is attributable to the pool. But we are refining the scope and the budget as we move through validation and ultimately when we present our findings to Loyalist Township Council at the end of next month, that'll be the final go or no-go for the project. So we're not fully confirmed yet, but we'll have all the information we need in about six weeks' time to make, for our council to make a decision. And I can just give a quick, very quick timeline slide on the next slide, please. In the event that we do achieve validation, we'll get right into design and procurement and hopefully break ground January first of two thousand twenty-four and be done by December of two thousand twenty-five. So I can just leave it at that.
No, that's, that's perfect. Thank you very much for speeding through that, but getting, getting us that important information. Okay, at this point, I will open up the floor to any questions from council. Any questions at this point? Councillor Sannick, go ahead.
Thank you. I was trying to unmute councillor Osterhoff. Thank you very much for the presentation and for all the information that you gave. I just wondered, what's been the response from loyalist residents that now, when swimming lessons open up, that city of Kingston residents will have fair share of, you know, taking time slots as, at the same time as loyalist residents have. Have you broken the news to them yet? I know originally in two thousand nineteen, when we were going forward, let's see, or before that, we had to wait like seventy-two hours just to see if there were any, you know, like leftover time slots before city of Kingston residents could book. So I just wonder if you've had any reaction from loyalist residents with this new scheme? If we give you the six point five million dollars.
I believe Carrie maybe has an answer to that. If you heard at the open house, I was not here during the open house.
Sure, I can certainly field that question. At this point, we have not moved forward with that, that information as of yet. Our first approach is absolutely to have that discussion with city of Kingston council this evening and then the same discussion with our council through validation. So that information would come following both of these meetings. I can share with you that at this point, our, our our residents are anxious just to move forward with the facility and be able to have, have lessons back in their own community. Having restricted lessons and having limited lessons available to them and having to drive into the city of Kingston is where they're not pleased with at this point. That, that's the information I have. They, they haven't provided us with feedback otherwise.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, I know that I'm right next door to Loyalist Township, so I get the Loyalist recreational brochure in our mail. And then if we go forward with this, how will the city of Kingston residents know when the swimming lesson registration will come up? Like, will you do special advertising to make sure it hits all the Kingston residents, like right across the city of Kingston?
Rebecca, do you want me to continue? Thanks, Rebecca. Yes, we would be continuing to work with our corporate communications department to ensure that we're reaching the residents and work with your, the city of Kingston's Recreation Department to determine the best way to reach your residents at the same time.
So, Councillor Sannick, that might be a question you can also raise with our staff once, once the item comes up on the floor.
Okay.
Next is Deputy Mayor Osterhoff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And councillor Sannick did ask sort of the context of some of my questions, but I guess I wonder, so the size of your pool looks tremendous. Well done. It's going to be pretty exciting for the entire area, I'm sure, but is it sized like for for an area such as what you're, what we have, the Loyalist Kingston, like, or will it be, you know? Is it still a need for another pool in the area? Or should this be a relief for, for the region? I guess it would be, but is it, is there a, is there a known size and calculation for that? And have you used that?
So, so again, there's probably, probably a question that's probably well to our staff. But by all means, if, if loyalist staff want to speak to their, their sense of what the, the regional need is, please feel free to go ahead.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Sure, thanks. When we did our research based on the size of the pool and the need, it was based on what the need was within Loyalist Township and the region that we were serving at the time. It wasn't necessarily taking into consideration the full city of Kingston. Within, within the staff report, I think that's being presented to you tonight. I think your CAO can certainly add some context to that answer, and I would certainly allow, I'd let her, her speak and add more to that, but there is certainly a need for more indoor pools in the area, and we're just looking at what is going to serve our area at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, next is councillor Hassan.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Everybody can hear me. Yes, somebody?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, and thank you for the presentation. It's a great project. It's looking in the paper. It's, I think, a much-needed facility for both community and it will be very beneficial. My just quick, quick question is, if you can share that partnership in this project with the Loyalists and the Kingston, how, how is the, I mean, how beneficial is it to the both, both community, this size of facility? How beneficial this can be?
So, so again, I, we'll, we'll give our staff a chance to maybe answer that question later on, but again, feel free if loyalist staff would like to answer on behalf of benefits for Loyalist Township.
Thank you, your worship. I, I can certainly speak to that. Since closing our pool, we definitely have learned through COVID the importance of recreation and social interaction. But coming out of COVID and closing our pool, we have learned very quickly that the pool is a missed piece of infrastructure in our community and something that our residents are certainly missing. Some of our residents are taking advantage of a partnership with the YMCA and the BGC within the city of Kingston that we're able to have at this point, but it is a missed entity and it's something that our community is certainly looking for. We were the only indoor pool in our county and it is something that we're looking at trying to move forward with the best, best foot forward on what we can offer in our township and, and what we're putting before you tonight. We feel is something that will serve the community for years to come.
Well, thank you. I think certainly this, this facility will be a reason to bring both community together and benefit of the, the, this facility will be equal. And I think it's a great product. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I see one more question from councillor Shaves.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I know this is going to be a great benefit. Even though we need more within the city boundaries, but my question is in regards to the actual facility that you have, will residents of Kingston only have access to the aquatic facility or to the whole facility at large? Such as ice rink?
Through your worship, that is your excellent question. We do work with city of Kingston organizations today. We are an overflow arena for your city of Kingston minor hockey organization. We work with the Greater Kingston Girls Hockey Association. With Ice Time, we know that we have loyalist residents that are part of those organizations, so we already welcome city of Kingston organizations in our facility. If a city of Kingston resident calls and wants to book ice at our facility, we treat them like we do a resident. We do not charge non-resident fees in our facility today, so they're treated as they would be a loyalist resident. So they're treated equally through the facility.
Okay, so they'd be able to attend free skates as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you, folks, very much for, for coming and for presenting that information. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, so with that, we will move on in our agenda. We don't have any further delegations. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none. We do have several motions of condolence and recognition. So first, moved by councillor Stephen, seconded by councillor Anis. That the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family, friends, peers and students of Lisa Murphy, who passed away peacefully on July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Lisa touched the lives of many with her deep compassion and infectious joy. A beloved mother, wife, mother, daughter, sister, friend and teacher. She will be fondly remembered for her love of reading, her wit and her relentless optimism. Our hearts are with Lisa's family, especially her husband Tim and her two children, Noah and Katie. Second, moved by councillor Ridge, seconded by councillor Stephen. That Kingston City Council recognize the third week of September as Consent Week. Recognized by many post-secondary institutions and municipalities across Ontario, the timing of Consent Week has been chosen to recognize that during the first weeks of school, there's a significant increase in sexual violence. Consent is an agreement to do something where all people involved have consciously agreed to do something without other threat or coercion. Consent is also about having and establishing boundaries, having the freedom to express those boundaries, respecting and accepting the boundaries that others establish and being able to accept and move on rejection. As Queen's University is hosting events, awareness campaign and training workshops, the city of Kingston recognizes the efforts of Queens to encourage and foster consent culture and encourages all Kingston residents to do the same during Consent Week. Third, moved by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, seconded by Mayor Patterson. That the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family, friends and colleagues of the Honourable Hugh Segal, who passed away on August ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Hugh lived an extraordinary life in Canada's political and public realm, with Prime Ministers often speaking of his singular contribution to Canada. For five decades, Hugh was at the table for some of Canada's most important moments. Most recently, helping to lead the Commonwealth through a difficult period as a Canadian member of the eminent persons group. Hugh will be remembered for his laugh and steadfast commitment to the causes he hailed dear, which earned him the description of happy warrior. Our hearts are with Hugh's family, especially with his wife, Donna, whom he adored, and his dearly beloved daughter, Jacqueline. Number four, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff. That the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Marla, Samantha, Cody and the whole Rosen family for the sudden and tragic passing of Greg Rosen on September second. Greg will always be remembered as a kind and charitable business and community leader who brought the best out in everyone. President of Kingston's Kimco Steel Sales Limited and previous owner of the Kingston Voyagers Junior A Hockey Team, Greg was a staple in the community that he loved. Most of all, Greg cherished his family as a devoted husband and father. We extend our deepest sympathy to the Rosen family and to all who knew him. And number five, moved by councillor Tozo, seconded by councillor Ridge. That Kingston City Council recognized Matthew Gaventer for his twelve years of service to the Kings Court Community Association. As coordinator, Matthew brought together the residents of Kings Court through the hosting of community meetings and all candidates debates, while facilitating communication between community members, local politicians and city staff on issues of importance to the Kings Court community. Thank you, Matthew, for your contributions. So we will call the vote on those five motions. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have no deferred motions this evening, so we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number seventy-three from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Bowden, seconded by councillor Shaves, that report number seventy-three from the chief administrative officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are only two clauses in the consent report. Would anyone like to deal with them separately? If not, then we will vote on them as a whole. So clause one, the Kinsman Dream Home contribution. Clause two, additional partnership opportunities, a co secondaire public, mil il, and a co secondaire catholique, Saint Mary Rivier. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number seventy-four from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Glenn, seconded by councillor Hassan, that report number seventy-four from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, the first clause is notice of objection to propose heritage designation one sixty-nine Union Street. There's no discussion. We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause two, capital budget amendment for unscheduled repairs to the environment control systems that closed Bell Park landfill. Point of order, Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, go ahead.
I sincerely apologize, Mayor Patterson.
I sincerely apologize, Mayor Patterson. I missed this in the write-up. I have to declare conflict of interest on number two.
Uh, that's that's the item we just hit before?
Yeah, can I just leave for now and then I'll write it up for you?
Yes, I I think I see the clerks nodding, so I think we can just sort of take it that you've declared a conflict of interest on this item, so you can just leave the meeting and re-enter once we move to the next item.
I apologize. I was just confused, completely confused. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so on clause number two, councillor McLaren.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. Were these chainsaw wielding cycles caught?
Uh, Ms. Morley.
Thank you, and through your worship, I can confirm that there is an active police investigation ongoing, but we're not privy to any information about that investigation, including potential suspects right now.
Okay, and considering that we're losing this money in the sense that we're just, we're spending it to get back to normal, what are we missing in, what can we now not spend it on? So what was that money going to be spent on that we are now not able to spend on that but have to spend it on repairs?
See you, hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So typically, the Environment Reserve Fund would be utilized to support projects like property remediation. It would also support our brownfield program or contribute to our landfill as well. So obviously, those are funds we're not going to be able to spend on those programs because we we do need to to move forward with these repairs.
Right, and how much in tax, as a tax percentage increase, would it be to get back to normal? So for example, at one point five million, what's an equivalent percentage in tax increase to get back to normal as a result of this?
Um, see hurdle, you want to take that one?
Uh, through your worship, I I have my hand raised.
Well, Ms. Morley, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, S C A hurdle said it's not funded from taxes, but the one point five million would be about a zero point six percent increase in taxes.
Zero point six, thank you.
Uh, okay, councillor Shaves.
Thank you. So how much do these professional engineers cost, and do we have any engineer on staff which could do this work?
Mr. McClatchy.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have engineers on staff. The work that's going to be performed there, though, is specialty electrical engineering that's specific to the pumping control systems and the pumping systems. So we would not have an engineer on staff that was was specifically qualified to do that kind of design work.
Okay, follow up to that. So does the city monitor the site, or does the contractor, does go a little confused on the report? And if so, how much does this cost?
Uh, okay, so annual monitoring happens on the site. It consists of groundwater sampling, surface water sampling, wastewater sampling, perimeter site visits on a weekly basis, and we contract that service out because of the size of the site and because of the amount of work required and because of the regulatory requirement to report all that annually to the ministry, Minister of Environment Conservation and Parks. We contract that out to a environmental engineering firm with expertise in landfill management, and their fee for doing that is approximately a hundred thousand a year.
Okay, final question. So when this operation is working properly, where's the contaminated water pumped to?
Uh, groundwater that's pumped from the site is pumped to the to the city sanitary sewage sewage system. The contaminants of concern in that groundwater are primarily iron and what we call unionized ammonia, and the sewage system is is capable of accepting those.
Okay, so this prevents it, sorry, I guess there's another question. So I guess this prevents it from getting into other areas where it's not supposed to, such as Karak River.
It prevents it from getting into the Karak River, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is councillor Anis.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. I know it's said, or I believe it's said in the report, that when the system was offline for those few days, that there was no environmental damage that took place to the Karak River. We have confirmed that, and this is for the individuals that perhaps didn't get a chance to read the report, but can a staff member just comment on the assessment of when the pumps are down and and any environmental issues?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that as soon as the the pumps went, as soon as we were aware, the pumps went down, our environmental engineer on the site mobilized additional site surveillance along the perimeter of the site, and that's how we can tell whether or not there's any groundwater seepage from the site is, we we basically look for the iron standing along the shoreline.
Thank you. One last question, and the one point five million that is going into the repair retrofit, I guess it's not a retrofit, a repair of the system. Is there a backup system that is going to be installed as well? Or is this just to bring the system back online to what it was in the beginning?
So this budget estimate is to bring the system back online to what it was in the beginning with some additional improvements that will make the system a little more robust and withstand the kind of vandalism that we've seen, things like concrete poles instead of wooden poles, for example, and poles being a little higher in the air and more underground electrical runs than than overhead. In the interim, while this work is being done, because this work is going to take several weeks, if not months, we do have our our water technicians, our water pumping technicians on site with mobile generators. They're able to hook up to individual pumps, pump them intermittently, so the pumping system is still working. And we'll be continuing to do that until the system is is back to its normal state.
Awesome. Thank you for the reassurance.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Tozo.
Thank you, your worship, through you. So one point five million, that's a spicy meatball. That's a lot of money, and that's money that could could have been used on so many important things for the city. My question, I think, is, I recognize that this is going in repairs, is to say, and Mr. McClatchy spoke previously, are there any other proactive measures being done to prevent future damage to infrastructure, certainly at that site, but also at other sites that may be more vulnerable to vandalism or damage, because we have seen more stuff done throughout the city?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that in response to the vandalism, we have put in place additional security patrols through Bell Park to specifically look at our our pumping and electrical infrastructure to hopefully prevent further damage to it.
Is that part of the cost that we're being estimated, or is that addition in addition to the one point five million?
That's part of our operating budget, so it's not, it's not calculated in the one point five million.
Oh, so it would be on top of that, we would have additional security costs as well?
Correct.
Okay, another question maybe for staff is, are there any other additional or similar inf- vandalism that's occurred, or is this just in the recent past, that's comparable to damages? I just want to know that we're comparing like to like, and or is this just an isolated sort of incident and likely going to be a one-off? I don't know if they can estimate that, but I'm curious if there's any other comparables we can can look at.
I see a hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So councillor Tozo, that's a great question. I would say that we haven't seen that same level of vandalism anywhere else in the city, that this one is pretty significant. We've had, obviously, some vandalism to some of our other properties, but they're minor compared to to what we're looking at for Bell Park.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for the answering all my questions. Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. I understand we need to do these repairs, and I I think we all get that, but I think it's also really important that we acknowledge that this is extremely disappointing for entire community. I think all of council feels that. I imagine staff feel that too. The public certainly feels that, and just, this is not what anyone here wants to spend money on, but I think that we can probably agree that this is unfortunately one of those critical repairs that has to be done. I just wanted to to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Hassan.
Thank you, your worship, and and through you. My my question is if the staff can share some of the causes which was a reason for for this damage to to the system. And the second part of one point five million, I understand is from the capital reserve budget from the environment, but we, obviously, we will come back to top of that budget again. So how are we going to top up that?
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I I can take that second part of that question, councillor Hassan. So the Environment Reserve, where the money is coming from, is it's not funded from taxes. It's actually funded from a variety of sources. It's funded from profits from the hot water appliance rentals through Utilities Kingston. Is about half of the revenues go in there each year, as well as some money from our brownfield tax recovery program. So some of the brownfield recovery, we have a portion that goes back in there to fund the brownfield costs, and then we have a small amount coming from our solar panel program as well as our energy retrofit program. So those will continue to to go into that that reserve fund and build back up that balance.
Thank you. And the first part, to sum up the the causes to damage this system.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. The causes of the damage were mostly, as it says in the report, several hydro poles were cut down by chainsaws in entirely. Pump control boxes were broken into and smashed open, and all the various types of instrumentation and and specialty switching and so forth, and wiring inside those boxes was removed, presumably because of their their copper content. Overhead transmission lines were were cut and stolen. Underground and in well cabling was cut and stolen. Transformer, one transformer was was completely broken up, and the copper moved from that and stolen. And at least one large specialty pumping well was removed and and stolen, again, all presumably for the worth of the scrap copper.
It's very sad to hear this. And definitely, this is caused by some of the resident or citizens of our city, or maybe some people came from outside. One point five million dollar bill caused to this repaired to or or the damage. And all those stolen things and damage to the property or the infrastructure didn't take anywhere those individuals who tried to steal those products, the pumps and wires, but they just damaged very badly and caused the community and and the city one point five million dollar. I I don't understand as a community what we think and how we can handle this. I I just want to highlight like this one so people who are watching it and they will watch, they can understand where this damage coming from. And it's time for us to make some hard scene, and I'm sure as a council, we will take some tough measures to fight these kind of vandalism and losses to our city properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Shnani.
Hello, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is more, these recycling facilities where when people, they steal these materials, is there a way they can tell where these materials are coming from, and do they monitor who sells these materials to try to figure out who sells like stolen materials? And would they refuse to buy materials from individuals who are known to vandalize and steal these materials to sell? Is there like any, is there anything that can be done or a mechanism that can be put in place to to help make it less attractive to steal and sell, or it's probably just, they just buy anything from anyone without asking questions? Thank you.
So that's actually a good question, I think, to raise, that councillor Hassan and I, I think, would raise it at the next Police Services Board meeting. Councillor Shnani, and we'd be happy to to report that info back to council. I'm not sure if staff would have any of that intel necessarily.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I just thought I would ask it.
Yeah, so so why don't, if it's if it's okay, councillor Hassan, we'll, we will speak with police, and then we'll report back to council.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Glen.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just back to the cost impact. So I'm noting that temporary operations, monitoring, and security will cost ten grand per week. How long is this estimated to go on because it's coming from operating budgets, and it's been noted that then our operational budgets are going to exceed what is planned for? So could somebody speak to what that impact is going to be?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So we expect to be in this temporary operating mode until probably the end of the year. So you can do the math on that. It's going to greatly exceed our operating budget, and I think Ms. Kennedy can confirm this, but when we do have overages, unforeseen overages in operating budgets, they are generally funded through working fund reserve and and mechanisms like that.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add, Ms. Kennedy, just in terms of the impact that we're going to see?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, as Mr. McClatchy said, we do always have the ability to take from the working fund reserve. But I expect, based on the amount between now and the end of the year, we do have some other surpluses, and and I expect we'll attempt to try to absorb that within the current operating budget and not need to draw from the working fund reserve.
All right, that's good news. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else on clause two? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, clause three, aquatic needs assessment and Loyalist Township Aquatic Centre partnership. Councillor Shaves.
I'm sure everyone's surprised. I want to talk to the subject. I know, shocking. It's been a while. So on page seven of the report, it noted that twenty twenty-five percent of users of our pools were non-residents. I was just wondering if Kingston Pool was being accessed by not rents, if they were being, if we were being financially compensated by other municipalities, especially considering Fronta County was about fifteen percent of that.
See you, hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So you are correct, councillor Shaves, that there is a portion of our pool time that is being accessed by resident outside of the City of Kingston boundaries. So currently, there is no non-resident fee that we apply, and municipalities are not financially contributing to the City of Kingston. There is also no wait time for registration, and I understand that that's something that, you know, as a council or as a city, we might want to consider in the future, depending on the needs that we continue to have for pools and and how we can work with our partners.
Okay, you you answered my next question. Thank you. Going to exhibit A of the aquatic facility needs assessment review. I know we've done a lot of reports and studies now the last few years, so hopefully this time we can actually end up with an actual aquatic facility to meet the needs of our residents. But at one point three of the report under methodology, approach centered on the concept of person visits per year. Not sure if these were in total accurate, considering the high demand for services. More importantly was the, how quickly the swimming lessons spots were taken, filled up, which I believe was done within minutes. Considering or the length of the waitlist. So were these taken into consideration?
So thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have our consultant, Mr. John Heck from Sierra Planning, who's actually on on the the call tonight. I would suggest that he'd probably be better positioned to answer that.
Mr. Heck, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through through you to councillor Chavez. On the issue of the methodology, so On the issue of the methodology, so just to sort of bring it back, we use two approaches. If you look at it, one is the service standard based on population, which is more of a proxy. The other one is a more detailed investigation of the actual utilization of each pool that's under that was in the area. So on that, we're confident that those numbers reflect the actual, what we call observed demands. So those that go through and use the facility on an annual basis. The term person visits should probably just be explained. Every time a person goes to the pool, that counts as a person visit. So if you're one person and you go every day for a year, you you count as 365 person visits. So you multiply those out. Those are the numbers. On the waitlists, part of the reason we 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 take that more detailed approach at looking at actual utilization is because we can speak to issues such as waitlists. So you're absolutely right, there are waitlists. There's a degree of compaction and we've taken that into account in in the report in terms of recognizing it. And, you know, it speaks to the issue that there will always be some level of of compaction based on people's preferences for when they want to swim. You know, there is prime time, just there are arenas. But based on what we're we're looking at, we don't think it it's so significant that it would change the conclusions in any way. So I think the resulting numbers that we put forward are reasonable in that regard. But but waitlist remains something that through the scale of the facility and how it's operated, how it's staffed and, you know, how it's marketed, these are ways to try and ameliorate that situation.
Thank you. And your report also talks to unmet, unmet demand, which is also the waitlist, which in your report mentioned there was nearly 5,000 people on that waitlist. But what that doesn't include would be everyone who didn't make the waitlist because it was too long or got frustrated enough that they couldn't put maybe all their children in into swimming lessons. So they decided they're just going to give up and just try try again at the next round. So is is that unmet demand always taken into consideration? The lack of the increased need such as we have more than 5,000 people that didn't remake the the waitlist?
Yes, through you, Your Worship. Yeah, absolutely. You're you're absolutely right. It is. It is not solely that 5,000 people. It's more than that. And it does result in, you know, a level of demand which is not captured. It's very difficult to estimate exactly what that is. But we know it's there. And so the numbers that you do see in terms of our stipulations for when you need new pool facilities, we get into, you know, decimal places here. The general, it reinforces the message that you need to build, but it doesn't change the conclusions of what we've got. But I would just offer one other comment. You know, if if you have a municipal Class A pool, as they refer to them, which is what, you know, Loyalist is going to be building as an example, you know, everyone in the community recognizes that's a community facility. They pay taxes, they use it, so on and so forth. When you have a pool that is part of a university, like a well-known university like Queens, for example, or part of a, you know, the military installations, there is a perception on part of a lot of people that maybe it's not for them. So there is a, there is a level of demand that that gets sort of unmet because people don't perceive it as something that they they can access, even if they possibly could, but then there are waitlists as well. So when you put all that into the mix, I think the message of our report is that if you're able to get partnerships which improve access, that's going to help with the waitlist. But if you are able to build a facility within the short to medium term, then how you how you program it and the scale of it as well can work to make sure we maximize accessibility. So that's kind of how we've we've addressed it. So hopefully we're not minimizing the issue of unmet demand. But I don't think it changes the conclusions that we've come forward, it just reinforces them.
Yeah, thank you. And as I mentioned, our our all of our swimming spots were taken in a matter of minutes, not hours or days. So that that sort of emphasizes demand. I do want to thank you for the report. It is very eye-opening and I think it's very concrete to probably everyone in council that not only do we need probably one aquatic facility, that there's a need for two to different locations. I know Counselor Bones here with us, so he's probably happy that with with as well as at some point in time. So something we do need move forward with. And I know in regards, if we are going to be moving forward this, one of the biggest stumbling blocks is going to be financial. And I do know that Ann Parker from MP Garrison's office watches our council meetings religiously. So maybe she keep that an ear in Mr. Garrison's ear that we'll be needing funding down the road. Thank you.
I thank you, Counselor Shaves, for that plug for funding from upper levels of the government. Never pass up an opportunity for that. Thank you. Next is Counselor Amos.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. My concern is is with regards to the Amherst View Pool. I'm all about partnerships. I get that and and partnerships make for stronger facilities and stronger community. My question is accessibility. Right now, we have a number of residents that probably cannot afford to drive out to that and and a number of residents that would take our transit system. The existing transit route to the Amherst View facility is is not strong. We have two and a half years to potentially address this issue for when the facility comes online. But is this something that city staff can work towards with Loyalist Township in regards to making our transit system stronger for our residents to get out there?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you and through you, I I'm I'll get started and maybe Commissioner Joyce might want to add to that. That's a, that's a very good point. Counselor Amos, you're correct. We have Route 10 that actually goes through Loyalist Township. And there are conversations that are have started and will continue to happen in terms of improvements, potential improvements to that route or other potential alternative routes. So that's something that is currently being discussed. And I'm sure we'll see actually some of that information come back through the rural transportation study that should be coming back to council by early next year.
Mr. Joyce.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so CEO Hurdle is certainly correct and she took a lot of the window to myself with that. That was good. Yeah, we certainly are going to be looking at that as part of our overarching review of the transit system that's coming up over the next essentially nine months timeframe. So all of those things that are taken into consideration, we realize that obviously that facility will be important to Kingstonians. And so access will be an issue and we want to obviously try to address that as best we can.
Perfect, thank you. My my last question, and it's the same vein. This facility comes online in in 2.5 years roughly. But our residents are still in that void of trying to find swim lessons for the children or for themselves. And are we are we still exploring all efforts working with the Queens Pool, RMC or the Military Pool, BGC, the YMCA Pool, any pools that we can try and find swim lessons? Is are we continuing to press that knowing that we're still in a holding pattern for 2.5 years?
Ms. Turner.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Counselor Amos, for the for the question. Yes, the City of Kingston, we're still stop, we're still working with our community partners. So last year, for example, we partnered with the Kingston YMCA on what we called Splash School. So we were able to provide swimming lessons time at the local YMCA for for classes. We are doing that again. We also partnered with Queens University on purchasing pool time, which was able to allow us to put additional swimming lessons in for the spring. And we plan on doing that again this fall.
Okay, thank you. And my my last question, sorry, Mayor Patterson, and appreciate the leniency. The I know the Spark Program for a number of our residents is utilized. Does is the Spark Program applicable to an Amherst View facility?
Ms. Turner.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you again, Counselor Amos, for the question. At this time, the Spark Program is only available to programming within City of Kingston facilities. But the program is currently under review. We are doing work on the overall municipal fee access program, which includes Spark, Kingston Transit Pet Fouchers. So I believe that work is coming back to council by year end or early Q1 of 2024.
Perfect. And that would be my only comment for, you know, if we're going to partner with this organization or with this township, which I think is great. I think we need to make sure that all of our residents have that ability, no matter economic circumstances, so they can tap into that facility as well. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I just want to speak briefly to Counselor Amos's point there. And I think part of me is wondering if if we were to have this extra pool capacity, sort of basically in the West End because it's Amherst View, if that might help alleviate some of the pressure on Artillery Park. If some of the people are starting to go to the West End, that might create more space in theory. Again, I realize it's not enough, but I just wanted to put that out there, that the sort of the way in which things move. I don't know if staff wants to comment on that at all, but just the concerns about transit and and access. I agree, it should be accessible to all, but I wonder if there might be some flexibility there.
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you and through, Mr. Mayor. So you're absolutely correct, Counselor Stephen, that if, you know, there is availability of the pool in whether it's in Amherst View or Kingston West, we know that people that probably reside in the West End of Kingston are going to be traveling most likely more to the pool in Amherst View than they would to Artillery Park. That will create more capacity at the Artillery Park location. So overall, when we look at the system, and that's why the needs assessment report that was presented to council was one that looked at the regional needs because it's very difficult to actually, you know, stop at a at a actual boundary, at a municipal boundary and be able to exclude that. So completely agree that it would help to shift some of that usage and free up capacity elsewhere in the system. We do, we do have some transit currently, but, you know, point taken in terms of improvements to require to that route.
Thank you. And I know as a parent with three smalls who need swimming lessons, we're going for proximity because you don't want to be toting kids all over town if you don't have to. You want to get in and out. As for the funding, I just wanted to touch back on that because back in 2019, so we're looking at 25% of the municipal share to pay our part as City of Kingston. And back in 2019, that was around one and a half million. And now in 2023, we're jumping up to six and a half million. And that's huge. So I was just wondering if staff could could speak to that. I mean, I don't think it's getting any cheaper. But wondering if you could comment on that, please.
Thank you and through, Mr. Mayor. So absolutely, Counselor Stephen, a couple of things. One is the the project that was presented in 2019 actually was quite different than what is being actually conceived now. So there were changes that were made to the project and also the grant funding was something that was unknown at the time. I think that the the hope was to to get more grant funding back in 2019 than what was received recently. And again, I don't want to speak for Loyalist Township. If I get anything wrong, I'm sure they'll let me know. But, you know, if you look at that combined with the inflation and what we're seeing in terms of construction costs have gone up substantially across the board. I think when you combine a number of those factors, that's why you're seeing this particular cost. I do want to point out for council because we are talking obviously about the city needing another pool within its boundaries. We can expect that the cost of that pool will be at least this much or more because we are aiming for obviously more amenities within that space. So I do want to, I do want to flag that. I think those are unfortunately the the cost that we're facing now.
Thank you. And that context is is good, I think, for perspective as well. I have one final question and it's so given that the cost is so large and yes, we're contributing to another municipality's project. Is there any other grant money that we could be applying for or they could be applying for to help offset that cost? Or is this just kind of it is what it is?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I they have received obviously some grant funding. And I believe that they applied for any grants that were available. I do want to point out that grants for recreational facilities don't tend to be, there aren't that many of them out there, especially if you're looking at building new. Often there are grants that are focused on rehabilitation or renovations. But it's not like housing or other projects that that we have where grants are far more available. Recreation grants are not as frequent and I do believe that they have applied to all the grant options that they had open to them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Next is Counselor Glenn.
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I with respect, my colleagues have been focusing on the loyalist portion, which I think actually makes a ton of sense. So I'm definitely in in favor of this. Given the urgent need we have for more pool space, period. So my questions are actually for other things that we're discussing in this. So in particular, as we're moving forward in terms of a memorandum memorandum of understanding with the YMCA, I note that one of the things that was mentioned in the aquatics report was obviously the YMCA's Y-first approach, which means they're not looking at the community, they're looking at the why first. As we move into that memorandum of understanding and potentially a partnership with them, I just want to make sure that we are negotiating to make sure that that this actually does serve the community, not just Y members. And can somebody just speak to that briefly in terms of what we're doing?
CEO Hurdle, go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the conversations with the YMCA so far have been at a fairly high level. And, you know, the intent of putting together this MOU is to be able to start exploring in more detail with this partnership, which hasn't yet been established, but what it could look like. There is no question that we have been clear with the YMCA that we want this asset to serve the community. So what that looks like, I'm not exactly sure. That's some of the details we still need to work out. But they're also quite aware that we have pressures for sports tourism as well. So there's a community need, but there's also the sports tourism need. So those are all the conversations that we've started to have at a high level with the YMCA. And I would expect that if council gives us this direction, that we would work through more of those details, which would then be brought back to you in late this year or early next year.
Okay, thank you for that. So my next question goes to the focus of this. So we are looking at aquatics, but we're also looking at potential development of a health hub. Now, my understanding is we should be able to open up some extra funding opportunities for that. So we just heard Counselor Stephen ask about grants. So I know it's preliminary stages, but maybe just a quick comment on the potential for other grant funding based on the fact that this could have a healthcare component to it.
Thank you and through, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Counselor Glenn, for this question. Absolutely. We know that there are more grants available to support healthcare initiatives. That's definitely one of the priorities of different levels of government, looking at provincial and federal government. So including some type of healthcare component and healthcare center that could focus on some type of rehab and supporting individuals would definitely open some doors, I think, for some additional funding.
And so along that line of financial funding, but also financial sustainability. If there's a healthcare component, then there's opportunity to tap into ongoing rehabilitation funding from a variety of sources. So I think that this is really important to to note that this could also make this very sustainable and keep costs down for our community. So one of the other thoughts here, I note, you know, you're looking to continue with ongoing discussions with a variety of partners. I'd like to suggest perhaps we include Kingston Health Sciences in this, that that might be a very good place to have that conversation, given models in other communities that we've discussed in the past. And I also, you know, just want to note that we're looking at, you know, a therapeutic pool. And I'm wondering if there's been any discussions with Hydro Athletics, which is just around the corner from our potential location for this at the InVista Center. They provide some of these services and I note that they potentially are looking for partnership. They have a really cool treadmill and a pool for therapeutic use, but just They have a really cool treadmill and a pool for therapeutic use, but just, I didn't know if we'd gone there yet and want to make sure that we recognize that we, we also have somebody that's in that business in a smaller degree.
Thank you, and, and through Mr. Mayor. So you're absolutely right, Councilor Glenn, a couple of things. One is Kingston Health Sciences Center. We didn't identify them in the report, because we have not yet really engaged with them. And we want to make sure that we didn't identify organizations that we had not brought into the conversation, but they are on the list of organizations to, to pull into this discussion. As far as your comment, we have not yet reached out to this business. I am aware of it, but we haven't yet had the conversation. We are looking at a therapeutic pool as an option, but you know, there's always potential for partnerships there as well, and we will look at that.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all the work, and I'm fully in support of obviously moving this forward. And thank you for, you've been working very, very quickly, and I, I appreciate it deeply on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Sun.
Thank you, Your Worship. Once again, first, I'd like, like to say thank you to city staff and CEO for bringing such project in the partnership with the other community or organization, and the now is with the municipal neighbor, neighboring municipalities. My first question is, I read it here, six point five million funded from the municipal capital reserve in 2024, 2025, and 2026. Is that one-time payment divided on three years, or that is an each-year payment says six point five million?
See you, Hurdle.
Thank you, and through Mr. Mayor. So Councilor Hassan, that's the one time. It's up to six point five million, which we will divide in three years.
Okay. Also, if we are partner, we, we become partner with the Loyalist Township. Do you have any number, or we can, if I can, may I ask, what is the ongoing cost will be to, like, maintenance cost will cost us, will be partnered in that as well?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you for the question, Councilor Hassan. At this point, there has not been conversation about initial contributions to the operation and maintenance costs. I anticipate that that's something that over time, the township might want to revisit, because right now we do have a 20-year period where residents would be able to register at the same time. Kingston residents could register at the same time as Loyalist resident. But I anticipate that at some point, you know, the township would be looking at, at the City of Kingston for an ongoing partnership to help contribute to some asset management.
Thank you. I'm sure I would love to support this project. And as Councilor Shave said, that it's not enough. We do need another facility for, to meet our needs for our city. And definitely, we are all up, and I am trusting Mayor Patterson's leadership. He has very good relationship with MP Garretson. And he, he been doing a great job so far from his, since he got elected as the MPP, bringing quite a bit of project to the Kingston, and we're looking forward, and definitely we can influence and request to help us and ask the federal government to give us some money, so we can have our own facility to serve the Greater Kingston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Senek.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Just a question to our consultant at Sierra Planning. And with all the information that you compiled in this report and the data about usage at the swimming pools in this area, do you feel that if we do give the six point five million to Loyalist Township, will that forfeit our chance in Kingston to get a 50-meter pool here?
Through your worship, no, no, these are very different, different questions, I think. The, I can't, obviously, I can't speak to the, the business proposition that you're debating on with Loyalist Township, but to the extent, as our report points out, we are looking at this from the community's perspective primarily in terms of need. The sport tourism element is always important. And, but that is a different question to, to that being posed here in the report.
Okay, thank you. And just a follow-up. So we, the, the need could still be there for us to pursue a 50-meter pool then? You know, like the demand for pool activity would still be there for a 50-meter?
Through you, Your Worship. I'll, I'll defer to, to CEO Hurdle on that question. But as I said, there, there are different processes of, of commentary, so different, different report, perhaps.
See you, Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding is that the needs assessment identifies a need for two pools within what I would say the region. So Kingston and surrounding areas, because we know that the population from, from around Kingston is coming into the city, accessing services. The report does not indicate whether those pools should be 25 meters or 50 meters. Most of the community pools are 25 meters, because that's where you get most of your community usage. The decision to go to a 50-meter pool would be entirely one of council. It's not something that's required, but council could choose to, to go in that direction. I think what the report says is, even after Loyalist is built, you still need the equivalent of one pool. So what that pool looks like, whether it's a 25-meter, 10-lane, or 50-meter pool, that, that's left up to, to the city to really decide, but the key here is, you know, the actually having a, another pool.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other speakers on this, we will call the vote on clause three. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, thank you. Moving on to clause number four, municipal support for supportive transitional housing. Councilor Tozo.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I just have a statement. I was on, I've worked with Lionhearts a lot in the time that I have been a counselor. They are a phenomenal organization. I've been really impressed with the work that they do with food, the work they do with transitional housing and with our unsheltered population. This is exactly the type of organization that we should be helping out, and I know we have before. I fully support this motion. And if Ann Parker is listening and you're looking for a good federal organization to partner with, Lionhearts is absolutely terrific. I've got a few smiles from that, you know, it's online forum. And I know Councilor Stephen and Councilor Oosterhoff and I, I sat with their strategic planning, and this is just, they're doing so many great things. This is one of, yeah, this is just one of Kingston's really like terrific organizations, and their hearts are terrific. So no questions. I just fully support this motion, and I'm very happy to vote in favor of it and support Lionhearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I just want to confirm that I'm understanding, because this almost seems too good to be true. So from what I understand from this report, Lionhearts is looking at two properties. One of them is a detached dwelling with two apartments that can accommodate up to five people. And the other one is an institutional property that's being given to them that they need to renovate, and that will be able to house up to eight people. Am I right so far? Yes, okay. And so all of this is happening with a city contribution of $57,000, and then the 300 that will come from the 275 Queen Street development that is tied up right now, but will eventually be resolved. Is that also correct?
Snorter Goff.
Thank you, and to you, Mayor Patterson. That is correct. It actually is really kind of a continuation of two programs that we started, one in last council cycle 2022, and actually this year in May. So we have been able to basically offer up existing homeownership program dollars for the not-for-profit, this not-for-profit, to make down payments to this, to this one property. And yes, the other property is basically a, a donation to turn that back into housing as well. So it's not too good to be true. I think it's really just a way of being hopefully creative with, you know, the various programs we have and amazing partners such as Lionhearts.
Well, well done to everyone who came together to make this happen. This sounds like an amazing way to stretch dollars and support the people who need it. So I, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Shaves.
Thank you. I do support this and will continue to support this, but I, I won't give a warrant to Councilor Tozo to lay off my funding support supporter. So but anyway, my question is in regards to the $300,000 and the community benefit contribution, what happens if by chance this does not come through?
Snorter Goff.
To you, Mayor Patterson. Sorry, getting used again to virtual council. So, so the risk is identified in the report is, is very, very low, because we already have been working on the minutes of settlement for this, this arrangement with Podium and at 275 Princess. Again, council, obviously, it's council's priority. We really want to kind of look at kind of housing solutions. We, at this point, are providing this funding ahead of the, the funds coming to Lionhearts. So we would have to then, again, given that's a very, very low risk, look at a way to kind of support the project or, or work with Lionhearts on a different approach. But again, we have really a lot of faith in where we are currently in the settlements and also with our partner to, to move this forward. And we also think it's incredibly timely and needed to create these transitional housing units right now. So yes, we have been looking at the risk, but we recommend to go ahead and still make this project work.
Thank you, and I fully support this project and hopefully more to come.
Thank you, Councilor Ridge.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I just want to echo what some of the other counselors have said about, kudos to staff and Lionhearts for this agreement. This is fantastic use of taxpayer money. It's very effective. It's, it's great. It's fantastic. I do have a question that may seem a little random, but as there was, there is the Adelaide Street Shelter that was implemented, and one of the primary concerns that I received from constituents around that shelter space was potential lapse in communications with them about what's ongoing with that, with that shelter space. Is there plans for communications with the residents around these transitional housing units before the transitional housing opens up? Thank you.
Mr. Orgraft.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Excellent question, and I know there's definitely, you know, with every new housing development, an important part is bringing the neighborhood up to speed. I mean, this, these are much smaller developments with five individuals in one and eight in the other. But regardless, I know Lionhearts has really, and other partners as well, have done always a great job in proactively engage with the neighborhood, and also often have actually provided, or through that have created much more supports and much more engagement with the neighborhood. So it's also a really great way to kind of diversify different projects in different neighborhoods. And, and these projects are kind of scattered across the community. So it really, again, I think also opens up an opportunity to have more, you know, projects in, in different areas.
Okay. Councilor Ridge, anything further?
No, that's, no, Your Worship, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next is Councilor Chinani.
Hi, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is like an amazing opportunity. And once the works gets completed, I'll be excited to see future initiatives from Lionhearts and, and what we can help them achieve in the future too. And, yeah, and I know Ann Park, Ann Parker is watching, so thank you for all your advocacy with trying to get federal funding for us. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Okay, if there's no other speakers, we'll call the votes on clause four. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause five, update to request for proposal for the Leon Center. Any discussion? Councilor Shaves.
Thank you. Quick question regards, there's been issues regards to lack of use of the facility. I'm just wondering if the winner of the contract will have a more positive active role in bringing more acts and variety of acts to the Leon Center.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you, Councilor Shaves, for the question. Yes, the discussions with ASM Global, who are the, the successful proponent, have been the fact of a couple of different things. So one, as stated in the report, they will work with our colleagues in the Arts and Culture Division to take a look at better synergies between the Grand Theater and the Leon Center. That will include an overall booking schedule for the facility. They're also taking a look at what could community, how can they support community arts and culture groups as well. And ASM is also looking at working with our community partners, Tourism Kingston, the DBIA, and Kingston Accommodation Partners, while they're re-establishing an event attraction fund and looking at different ways that we can bring larger concerts to town, but also break into different genres as well. So all of those items have been discussed, and plans will be put in place, and they will be working with, with city staff across the board.
Okay, thank you. And taking a different avenue, since we're taking over the maintenance of the facility, will we be needing to hire more staff in order to do that? Did we hire the staff that were already there? So I'm not sure how many staff are currently working at the arena, maintaining it, and doing the A surfaces and everything? So could you give us an update on that, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you again, Councilor Shaves. So what we have done is, the staffing schedule for arena operations for the Leon Center is similar to what we carry in our other facilities, so similar to operating a ice pad at the InVista Center or operating the Kingston Memorial Center. So we have hired both full-time and part-time arena operators, and we also hired a, a millwright within our facilities management and construction services division in order to support some of the capital works that need to be completed within the facility.
Okay, would we also need to be taking care of the custodial part of the facility as well?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Part of, great question, Councilor Shaves. So as part of that, what will happen with the new hybrid operating model is that similar to our other recreation facilities, our arena operators will do cleaning after community rentals. But ASM will be responsible for custodial staff for the larger concert and entertainment events, and also for additional custodial staff in the building for Frontex Games as well.
Okay. Or maybe, okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Sun.
It's a quick question. What is the difference in, in the amount what we receive and what we spend on to, to maintain that facility?
Mr. Turner.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So what we will, what we will receive is, as the report states, we'll receive monies to, to cover operational costs for the Leon Center going forward. As far as, I'm not sure, Councilor Sun, if you're, if it's, your question is more towards capital, but with capital works, recreational leisure services. and facilities management, construction services will be coming for it as part of the 2024 budget with a 15 year capital plan. But ASM Global will be making a contribution on an annual basis towards that capital plan as well.
But we have any deficit between income and expense in the past or since we opened it up? Or we are breaking even? As a city? Are we contributing any money from the city budget to maintain the facility?
I see order.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the model that's being proposed is one that covers all of cities' operational costs. So we are going to cover all of the related operational costs to this facility and its operations.
Thank you.
Call the vote on clause five. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to report 75 from the Environment, Transportation, or Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Moved by Counselor Chinani, seconded by Counselor Stephen, that report 75 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There is the one clause, automation of solid waste collection system. Counselor Shaves.
Thank you. And I'm not going to suggest that Ann Parker buys a truck for us, so we'll just leave that alone. The city is looking at, we have been looking at reducing waste collection benefits. How is this going to be a part of that? Because my understanding is the bins can be larger.
Ms. Santucci.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the proposal itself doesn't talk about the size of the bins or any anything that we will do to reduce waste stream. We we plan on coming back to council in the next six months with some proposals after we've done some community engagement. We've already done some community engagement on diversion in the past. We will bring all of that back to council as another report that we can look at the types of bins, the frequency of garbage collection, the weight, and all of that stuff would come back to council again in about six months, once we've had some time to work through some of those details.
Okay, thank you. I understand reading the report that there are going to be some issues in in collection, namely narrow streets, streets with on street parking such as downtown. And I know there's plenty of, as you know, in my district with issues with parking. And then we also have homes which have secondary suites or garages or laneways which aren't large enough for maybe two, even just two bins, your green bin and your waste collection, let alone having four. So what are the plans in addressing those?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there is lots of opportunities that we can look at. There will be areas of the city that we can't service as fully automated. There may be areas we can service as semi automated where there is a second person on the truck. They bring that bin out to the back of the truck. And there may be 10 or 15% of the city where we can't service through this mechanism at all, and we need to remain in some sort of manual. We hope to reduce that amount as much as possible, but most municipalities are seeing that there's somewhere around 10% of the municipality that the system just doesn't work very well for. In terms of the dual occupancy or units in different buildings, there's different options there where, you know, you could have one larger bin where the residents are all putting into one bin so that you don't have a number of bins in the driveways. There will be a lot of public engagement. There will be a lot of work at the time that this program goes into effect and before that, that we'll have to do communication with residents and work out those specific details for all of those individual areas. So we do plan on having people through the course of this that are working through those issues that we expect to find throughout the course of that, working directly with residents to to work out solutions that that could work. There are a number of other municipalities in the province that have already implemented, and there's lots to learn from those. And there's lots of that information that we're still gathering and that these municipalities are still learning as they go as well.
I understand. I am supportive of this. I'll just let you know, these are questions concerning me and we know that there are going to be some growing pains. I know there's going to be a transitional period for this as well. It's not going to all happen at once. And also mentioned in your report that full time staff is going down from 3216 because it's single man trucks. But as previously mentioned, there's probably going to be a lot of areas. Right now, I'm thinking there's probably more than 10%, considering downtown, narrow streets and especially my district and especially certain neighborhoods, which parking is a huge issue even for the school buses to get through. So I'm just wondering, are we actually looking at going down from 32 to 16 or is that going to be transitioned down slowly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so that would be, it would be slowly that the program will implement over a six year period. 16 is the worst case scenario. So if, you know, we're able to get everything with those trucks that we're looking to replace and we're able to use all of those as fully automated, it would be 16. In reality, it could be fewer than that. It will really depend on how well the system implements. And as you said, it will be implemented over time. We'll have to work through some of those challenges that we we come across.
Thank you. And I do understand the health and safety aspect, considering my history with health and safety for over 25 years. Because it's not an easy job picking up these heavy loads at times, especially on icy conditions or picking them off of snowbanks. However, we are still talking about lost jobs for the city.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure I would say lost jobs. Yes, the positions will decrease, but the staff members themselves, there is lots of opportunities that are coming up in the Public Works Department. There's a number of attrition that's happening through retirement, both in Public Works and Solid Waste that the employees that are currently in those roles would remain with the City of Kingston.
Yes, but that would be an attrition, not
Correct.
Right? So there would be a loss of positions overall.
Correct. Over time, yes.
Okay, thank you. In regards to changing the bylaw to allow residents to leave their garbage bins, and I understand these could be large in the front yard side lot or in front. I've already received complaints from some residents of other neighbors leaving the garbage on the side when they do have a backyard access to a backyard. So how would it affect them? Like, there's that smell aspect. So will there still be opportunity for residents have concerns for property standards if residents are not putting the garbage out and it's causing an issue? Will will just say to their neighbors?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that that the goal of those bylaw changes will be that only those people that don't have access to leave their bins out front, so they don't have a rear yard, they don't have a way to get that out, would be allowed to keep those out. And then, yes, we would need to look at bylaw. That would be all be sort of looked at when we look at the bylaw changes and the wordings associated with that.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. And I do understand that this would be the time to do so because a lot of our current trucks are reaching their end of life. So the transition of the financial cost to us is less now than if we delay this down the road, correct? Because it's 500,000. Is that per truck or overall?
No. So it through you, Mr. Mayor, it would be the 500,000 is the difference between ordering a manual truck and ordering an automated truck, and that is for all of the trucks, not per truck.
Okay. Also, the 500,000 is the overall difference?
That's correct on the trucks, yes.
Okay. And I did notice on in the report on page seven, that there are no capital costs listed for 2027, but there are operating savings. Could you explain?
Yep, sorry, I'm just looking at that chart now. So for 2027, the capital costs, there are no trucks to be replaced that given year. The savings are the number of staff that we would have reduced by that point in time with the conversions that happened in 2025 and 2026.
Okay. I know a lot of people are going to have concerns. I know these bins will have secure lids, but I'm sure in order to keep rodents and others out, but probably there could be some concerns and how are these lids going to open automatically? If it's not being done by a staff member?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the way that that system works is that when those those bins are tipped, they have a mechanism on it that turns that allows that lid to open.
Okay. Just going through my notes. Since these new trucks are going to have extra features on such as arms and cameras, do we have the necessary staff on hand to deal with that?
Through you, are you referring to the mechanical staff in order to repair those? Or fix those or maintain those? Yes, we do believe
By the way, yes.
Yep, we do believe we have the appropriate staff on available to repair those.
Okay. And will these new arm arms, when they replace the bins back down the ground, be able to put them down standing up so they're not rolling through the streets as we see every once in a while? So making our streets a little safer as well?
Yes, the intent is that they will get placed back down. I will say that there will be a little bit of a learning curve where our staff will have to learn how to operate those effectively, but I would think that will all be learned prior to the program going into place.
Counselor Shaves, you've got about 30 seconds.
I'm going to say thank you and I'm going to support this. Because I think going forward overall, it's a good plan, good cost savings as well. And it's a good health and hazard benefit for the staff that work in that, doing that hard, difficult duties. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I had some concerns raised about the weight limit, meaning possible increases in waste going to landfill and someone had pointed out that Toronto has a program where they have different sized bins. Director Santucci, you just mentioned in your response to Counselor Shaves that you are going to be bringing your report to council in about six months. So I don't think that I need anything else from that unless there's anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm close to Counselor Stevens on that. Well, what good, great questions, Counselor Shaves. And I'll just review my notes here. I I am, I do appreciate Ms. Santucci, that there will be coming back to council. There seems to be a lot of questions. I did have constituents concerned as well. And so the rural area will be the pilot. Is that correct? As I
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we we definitely in our first year will test some other areas in the system or in the city. But the north area really is a health and safety concern for us. We have people in the back of the truck. The vehicles in those areas are moving much quicker than they are in the city, and we want to be able to get our staff out of those those areas right now, remove some of those safety issues. So we will focus on the north quite a bit in our first two years of rollout.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. So I'm, I mean, I hear them every morning. I'm always amazed how fast they are. They're lightning quick out here. And so how will that be when it's considerably longer per stop? Like, how how will they be able to accomplish as much? There's only seven days and it's only five days a week. So how how do you hope to accomplish the amount of work required with the equipment that actually takes longer to do the job?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we we've compared our stops to stops with other municipalities with similar types of equipment. We don't expect to see any issues with the being able to pick up that number of stops within the eight hour period that we're working within. Our numbers are well within the numbers what other municipalities are working within.
Okay, and again, we'll hear in six months again too. So you guys will be learning as you go as well. Is is compliance for diversion? And how will that be? Can, you know, followed if which is not a bad idea. I think that neighborhoods could actually, three houses now with the diversion could have one bin to clean it up. But how will compliance be monitored?
Yeah, so what a lot of municipalities are looking at right now, and we're also taking a look at is AI. So as as you're dumping, AI is telling us whether what's going into that truck should be stuff that is being dumped or not. We are working on a system right now, a computer system that will allow us then to track different things that would allow us then to get back to the individual residents and and identify areas where there may be concerned if they're putting recycling in with the garbage or in with the garbage. It'll allow us to identify some of that and get back to those individual residents on the issues that they're having.
Okay. And has there been close consultation with the union on this? And have you worked closely with them?
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So we we have had a number of meetings with our own staff. The last meeting we had this week, we had with the union there present as well. We've had a number of meetings with the union on it, sort of on their own as well. So we have, we've had, we've had a number of engagements with the union and the union seems to be very well in line with moving ahead with this and recognizing some of those safety hazards and trying to remove those from the workers as well.
Okay, thank you. And then someone asked me about leaf collection, but the fall collection, that's all happening as normal. It does sound totally separate effort.
Yeah, so fall collection will still be something that will happen. There are some things that we can look at when we look at diversion as well in regards to leaf collection, but they can be different options we can look at. We will need to maintain some manual garbage trucks so that we can maintain that fall collection because we won't be able to collect in the bins that we're collecting in for garbage. So but that is something that we've been taking a look at as well.
Okay, well, we look forward to in six months and see what we're learning and how we can always improve what we're doing. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
Okay, next is Counselor Sun.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. And thank you, Director Santucci, for your question. And Counselor Shave has a great question. As I talked to you a week ago, some of the residents sent me the email regarding this new program and concerning and one of the questions was, who was provided the bin? And then other question was, how many people, they're going to lose their job. You provide me those answers, but I would love to or I would request to ask you, please explain against all those people who has the data is concerned, they will understand through you directly that how is Google going to work?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the bins will be provided by the city. We do have some green bins, organic bins out there currently. Some of those bins may be able to continue to be used and we may need to replace some of them based on on what we're looking at moving ahead with and whether the arms will will be compatible with the current bins we have. But we will provide all of those bins. There is a maximum of 16 positions which may I don't want to say be lost, but which may not be there at the end of time. In terms of staffing, though, we don't expect to lose any staff. We expect to repurpose those throughout the organization.
And that's all we have, people. And also, may I ask you to share with us how difficult is at the current situation and at this time to recruiting the people for for these position to work on the manual truck to collect the waste?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I think any recruitments seem to be very difficult lately, especially when you're getting into skilled drivers. It is difficult just to find those drivers, never mind going into, you know, solid waste.
And and this new system will help or will make the job easy to have the people to work as as a single person on the truck. They will reduce their burden and 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 the risk of injuries.
That is correct, and it may increase some of the diversity of the staff that we're able to put in some of those roles now as well. So, yeah.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole. We have no information reports. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have two motions. First, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff. Where the Committee of the Whole Budget Meetings for 2024 are scheduled for November 27th, 28th, and 29th, 2023. Whereas council has supported Kingston having one of the lowest municipal tax rates for similar sized municipalities in the province. Whereas the municipal tax rates for comparative municipalities will not be available to be taken into consideration for Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting scheduled for November 2023. Therefore, be resolved that the 2024 council budget meetings be moved to January 15, 16, and 17, 2024. Number two, moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor McLaren. That is requested by Mary Jane Phillips, 350 Kingston. City Council proclaimed the month City Council proclaimed the month of October 2023 to be October is plentiful in the city of Kingston. We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have one new motion. I'm just trying to gauge, it's a little harder for me to read the room when you guys are all on screens. Ordinarily, I would be thinking about taking a 10 minute break around now, given the length of meeting, and I'm seeing enough heads nodding that that's the right feeling. So what we will do is we'll take a 10 minute break and reconvene at 8:57 to, to deal with the new motion. We'll see you in 10 minutes.
Oh, I'm not muted. Oh. Okay, folks, it is eight fifty-eight, so we will reconvene. So we have one new motion on our agenda this evening. It's moved by Council Ridge, seconded by Mayor Patterson, where a city council endorsed initiatives to address affordable housing and homelessness within its 2023 to 2026 strategic plan. Whereas affordable housing and homelessness initiatives require significant investments, which have been primarily funded through the municipal capital reserve fund and other provincial and federal government programs as applicable. And whereas it is important to for the city to consider various options and tools to continue to significantly support affordable housing and homelessness initiatives. Whereas as of July first, 2023, the mayor has special powers and duties under part six point one of the municipal act two thousand and one that cannot be delegated and include to prepare the budget presented to council. Therefore, be resolved that council direct staff to bring an information report to council by November twenty twenty-three, summarizing all financial tools and options, including a special levy that could be applied in whole or in part through mayoral decision to the twenty twenty-four budget to leverage specific funding dedicated to affordable housing and homelessness. Okay, Council Ridge, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So, members of council, I feel that the language of the motion speaks. It's relatively straightforward, but I'll just go over a couple of the key points for everybody here and then potentially address some concerns that I've heard either from members of the council or from members of the public about this motion. So the first part is that we need more affordable housing. We all know this. We made this one of our main priorities in our strategic planning. And there were a lot of great discussions during that session and discussions that are ongoing. And we have examples of really great initiatives like what we voted on earlier this evening with Lionhearts. But this affordable housing requires money. And there are only so many mechanisms that we currently have available to us to use funding for affordable housing. So the spirit of this motion is to ask staff to present an informational report that will give us all the options that are available. Now, where the concerns can come in specifically. So the first is that there's usage of the mayor's powers. I think strong mayor's power and perhaps your worship, when I'm done speaking, you may want to speak to this directly. As, as we've all come to realize, specifically as municipal representatives during this period, we've had to adapt to a great deal of change around items that we may or may not be necessarily pleased with. But this is the reality of the situation. This is a new budgetary preparation and presentation process that we will be participants in. And so it was for me, even though I am opposed, don't offend your worship, to the strong mayor powers. This reality that we're, we're in, and this is the process that's going to happen. So for me, it was more a question of making sure that we were able to have this information available for us for the mayor and for the public for transparency purposes as well. And so that's why the strong mayor's power is mentioned in this motion. It's not necessarily, not necessarily an endorsement of it, but it's an acceptance of where we are as a reality in, in the moment. The other concern that I've heard from a few people is that when we're talking about all the financial instruments available, including this levy, potential levy, that is one of the options that is available. And I think that it's important for us as decision makers to have all of those options available, including the potential of a levy. Now, that levy would have to exist within the order that was given by the mayor in terms of the maximum three point five percent taxing increase for the next year. So if there were, if that tax piece was to be part of a potential solution during the budgetary process, it would not be increasing the tax rate beyond that cap because that order has already been issued by the mayor. So again, this is not a tax. That's a concern that I've heard a lot. This is making sure that we have all of the options in front of us so that we can make smart targeted decisions. So we can be responsible with taxpayer money and so that we can be transparent to the public. And for these reasons, I hope that you will support this motion. And I also want to thank your worship for a second. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on my list is Council McLaren.
Thank you. So there's a lot of questions I have here. As you mentioned, it was a potential levy. So the way I read this is we're talking about new taxes if this levy gets put on. A levy is a tax. Question to you first, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that you've given an order for a three point five as the maximum tax that you're willing to tolerate. Does that include or not include those? The ones that we do not have much control over, for example, the levy coming from Frontenac ambulance?
So that does not include items for which the city has no control over. So the paramedics is not included in the city budget. That's a separate line item because we have no control over.
Right. So that is a major concern. As you know, we're living in a very inflationary world right now. Inflation is rising. People are suffering as a result of increasing prices on food. If you have children, you know that they are expensive and they get more expensive the older they get. There is, uh, we're essentially turning up the dial on the heat on people who pay taxes. But one thing that may not be commonly known to everybody is that this also affects renters. If you rent, the landlords are usually only allowed to raise taxes a certain amount. For last year and for this year, it was two point five percent unless municipal taxes go up by more than fifty percent above that level. So your rate is right now three point five, an extra fifty percent above two point five is three point seven five. If the, if the levy from the, from the, that we can't control exceeds that, we will be allowing every landlord in Kingston to apply to the board, to the landlord tribunal board for excessive increases beyond the two point five. This thereby affecting every single person who either pays taxes or rents in Kingston. This is a potential that can be done. In fact, it has been done in the past. I do have residents who were complaining about this. If you happen to live in a large building by a major landowner, it's very much to their incentive to issue these to everybody and do wholesale through the, through the landlord tribunal. And it's possible that an individual may challenge this and may win, but that's a difficult thing to do, especially if you have a job that you have to maintain. What we're doing here is putting pressure on people, lots of people, pretty much everybody, because taxes are increasing, rents are going to be increasing as a result of this. There is a direct connection to this. If you don't believe me, can I just ask legal staff, can you confirm, is it true? What I said that the increasing, the rate that landlords can add when rent controlled apartments can increase is two point five currently unless there's extraordinary ones which are fifty percent more if municipal taxes raised by fifty percent more than their current level. Is that correct?
Ms. Morley?
Thank you through your worship. That's correct. Rent control applies to the majority of residential units in Ontario. Currently landlords can increase right yearly by up to two and a half percent. However, when landlords incur increased costs for municipal taxes and charges that result in an extraordinary increase, they do have the ability to apply to the landlord and tenant board in order to raise the rent above the guideline amount.
Thank you. And is there a limit to how much above the guideline that is stipulated in law? My understanding is there is not. It's something that needs to be considered as reasonable.
Thank you and through your worship. If the extraordinary increase is related to an increase in municipal taxes, then there is no limit on the amount by which the board can increase the rent.
So do you see the, the moral hazard we're putting Kingstonians in by raising taxes at a higher rate than is currently? Then, well, we're, we're very, very close to that rate right now. Any new vandalism to our infrastructure that may require an added tax to facilitate that could put us over that. And another question to staff. Are we experiencing any delinquencies in tax payments right now? Like at a higher rate than in the past, where, or are people coming with requests for consideration because they're having trouble paying their taxes?
So Ms. Kennedy, I'll let you answer that, but Council McLaren, just to know you have thirty seconds left. Okay.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So we are seeing the last couple of years, an increase in our arrears. Probably about three million dollars or so. We normally measure it based on the, the arrears, based on the total tax levy. And in the past, the cities run around about five percent of our levy in arrears. We're probably closer to about six percent of the total levy arrears at this point. And that's just comparing where we are at the end of the twenty-three tax bill, final tax billing as compared to where we were at that point last year.
Thank you. So before I run out of time, I'd like to move an amendment, which has been sent to the clerk to try and mitigate this particular thing. So the way I see this is that what you're at, what the, what the motion is asking for is all good except for the possibility of a new tax. That is one thing that I'm not willing to contemplate at this point because it is so possibly dangerous for everybody, including renters. So I would like to see everything else that is asked for here, everything else except that one thing. So as this thing is, it's just to add two words, but not between the words option.
So what I'm going to do, just because you're out of time, but here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to read the amendment. And that's going to restart the clock.
So I had hoped that you would do, start the clock after I said the word amendment. That's usually how it works. I'd like to speak to the motion after this is done with that last thirty seconds.
So your thirty seconds is already spent at this point. So what I'm trying to do is give you a chance now to, to restart that clock. So, so I'm going to stop you at this point, going to read the motion to amend, and then I will hand the floor over to you as the mover of the amendment. And then you've got up to five minutes then to speak to the rationale for the amendment if you'd like. So the only thing is that I see a mover. I just need a seconder before we can proceed. Okay. So that's seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff. Okay. So can I, can I just see that back up on the screen? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. So moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Dick Mayor Osterhoff. That new motion number one be amended by adding the words but not between the words options and including in the first resolve clause to read as follows. Therefore, be resolved that council direct staff to write an information report to council by November twenty twenty-three, summarizing all financial tools and options, but not including a special levy that could be applied in whole or in part through mayoral decision to the twenty twenty-four budget to leverage specific funding dedicated to affordable housing and homelessness. So Council McLaren, the amendment is duly moved and seconded. And so you have the floor and I will restart the clock.
Thank you. So essentially, all the things that are there, such as all the financial tools and options should be looked at. That sounds reasonable to me. If we're looking at new things and this would have the effect of not putting people in harm's way, the higher we raise these taxes, the less, the more likely it is that it's going to affect detrimentally those who are housed but on the margins of losing their homes. We will essentially be, if that number is triggered, we could be essentially unregulating the rent control in Kingston for a year or two, depending on how often this happens. And if you have any doubt about that, it has happened. So, um, yeah, I'll stop there and reserve the right to speak last to this as well.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend on the floor. So if anybody that wants to discuss only the amendment, which was just the inclusion of the words, but not a special levy. I will say I did have to think about whether or not it's contrary to the motion. I've gone back and forth on this, but I do feel that it's the wording, I think, I think it does work. I don't think it's something that I would rule out of order. It's ultimately, it's a question that's up for debate for council. So with that, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the amendment? Deputy Murrow's rough.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. And yeah, I appreciate this opportunity to, to speak toward it. And I do appreciate Counselor McLaren's angle on this one, too. I do appreciate the original motion and, and the intentions behind it. But I have also been contacted by constituents and would say that there's an uneasiness towards the term of a levy and and it's basically that. And I think that Counselor McLaren's amendment does, does free us of that stigma, but it's just not, does not sit comfortable with me. And then to utilize the mayor's powers for that, I and to bring it into play, I'm, I'm quite uncomfortable with that. So this will be a good opportunity to hear from others on how we feel about that. I think, I think Kingston is watching on this one. And one of the reasons that I am in favor, like I said, of, of the information reports, why, why wouldn't we? They, that, that's a good thing, right? And but I think that we, we shouldn't be jumping in where, where I believe that other levels of government, provincial and federal should be. And we heard it amo. We heard it amo very clearly, what, what we really need to see happening. And and it was silenced from the federal government. And we did actually see where the provincial government was filling in the gaps for us and for, for the federal government for a time, and they'll go to them for collecting, but there needs to be more done. And maybe that was the, the difficult part of AMO was we didn't necessarily, even at that venue, hear that much, that many more ideas on this, this crisis that we are in. So, but I think that we need a made in Kingston solutions and I will support an amended motion. And, and so I will, I would support the amendment so that we can, you know, work within the percentages that we, we have been given and look at new ideas and new opportunities for ourselves. So I do thank Council, Council McLaren for that, and I will support him. Thank you.
Okay, next is Counsel Rich.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Just as a procedural question, am I able to ask questions of staff at this time?
Yes. And when you ask questions of staff, the moment that you're done speaking, then I stop the clock while staff is answering.
Okay, thank you very much, your worship. So my question to staff is this. Can we be given an example of some of the tools that may be in this report?
See you.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Counsel Ridge, for this question. I think I want to start by clarifying this because I, I was a little bit confused by the conversation. We understand what the budget direction is. The mayor has been very clear that the budget direction is three point five percent maximum for operating and one percent for capital. So from a staff perspective, whatever options we bring back to council cannot exceed the direction from the mayor on the budget. So I want to be clear about that. We are not going to come back with something that's going to increase the taxes. So taxes are not going to go any higher. Examples that we could bring back is we do leverage obviously a one percent capital every year. Right now, this one percent is allocated over a number of different projects, initiatives across the city. One of the things that we could look at is making a dedicated effort to use a portion of this one percent levy, which is already existing and is in the direction of the mayor. We could look at utilizing a portion of that specifically for affordable housing, so dedicating a portion of that. We could look at dedicating a portion of the building faster fund that was announced by the province, assuming that we meet our housing targets. So again, this is encouraging people to build more housing. Definitely, we can look at that. We can look at new property taxes as well and how we, we can redirect a portion of that to, to housing. So there are a number of different tools that we can utilize. But I want to be clear that there is no way that staff are going to come back proposing anything higher than the mayor's direction on the budget.
Counsel Ridge?
Okay, thank you, your worship and through you. So I thank you very much to CAO Hurdle for that answer. Again, this is an informational report, just to reiterate, there's no decisions that are being made at this time, but it's about smart decision making. And if we're doing smart decision making, that involves looking at all the options that are available. We already understand as per what I have said earlier, as per the mayor, your order, your worship about the budget, potential budget increase or tax increase. That's, this would be, have to play within that limit. That's, that's, that's it. So I am a little confused by some of the conversation that's happening around this amendment or this proposed amendment. But again, I want to reiterate, this is looking at all the tools that we have available in front of us and being honest about some of the decisions and hard choices that we have to make during the budgetary process. So for these reasons, I think it's important that we have the possibility there or what the possibilities are for, and that includes potential levy. So thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counsel Glenn.
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, speaking with regards to the amendment and, and where we're headed with this, I'm in favor of information reports. However, they don't always go through. And I think one of the reasons they don't is because sometimes the language that we include here is a trigger to people. And that special levy is a trigger to people. Right now, we are in a situation where people are struggling financially. And I've said it before, I said it at our last set of budgetary meetings, that it's death by a thousand cuts. So although Mayor Patterson has a direction of three and a half percent and then another one percent in the capital area, this is something that we don't want to push too far. I'd like to see us if we can stay below that. My concern is that we're going to end up with more unhoused people. More people who can't afford to stay in their homes, seniors who are saying, hey, my tax levels are, are a struggle for me. So three point five sounds great, but are we going to be able to assure them that this level is, is small enough? I understand the concern for the homelessness, the homeless situation, and I want to see us move forward with this. Also, you know, I, I respect the other things that have been said, and I'll speak to the, the main motion when we get back to it, but I'm going to support this because I do think it's a signal to the community that we are going to do our best to give consideration for homelessness, but not to exceed their capacity to be able to assist. And that's where we need to be very careful. So I'm going to support the amendment based on that, that we not have a special levy so that we allow the citizens to, to know that we recognize their struggles. Thank you.
Okay, next is Counsel.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I definitely understand the, the good intentions of this motion. This is a problem that all of Canada is struggling with right now with rampant inflation, and there seems to be no real plan or end in sight to address this at the higher levels. I guess where I really struggle with this is like Counselor Glenn said, it's the mention of the special levy. So one of my concerns there is there was quite a debate about the enhanced mayor powers not that long ago. And, you know, it was one of those things where a lot of people were kind of scared about what it could bring and everything like that. And it kind of seemed like the consensus was, you know, a lot of people weren't really in favor of them, but then all of a sudden we get into this where it's, but now they can be used in, in this way. So I don't have any concerns with your leadership, Mayor Patterson, but I, you know, in the future, you, you may not be in that chair. And then what, what precedent does this set, right? Where it's kind of like, well, they're bad in one hand, but, but now they're good when we can use them. So it's like we're pulling them in already and we're starting to set that precedent when it's beneficial. I think there's a better way through this and, and I would, I would really struggle to say that adding a special levy, regardless of the amount, is, is our way through this. And, and the rationale there is through all my years on council, I've heard about affordability from seniors in Kingston. So how are we increasing housing affordability by adding a special level, levy, levy, sorry, if, if what we're actually doing is making it harder for people to afford homes that already have homes? It's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul in a sense. So you know, we're, we're taking money from people that may not have it to give anymore to try to solve a problem over here. That brings me to my next point. I think we have to realize this is not our problem to solve. We have to be honest with ourselves. This is a federal issue. This is a provincial issue. And they are sitting there watching us struggle with issues, just like the addictions crisis that are simply beyond our ability to solve. We're a municipal council. I look at it and you know, there's infrastructure needs that we have. We have the special levy for that. So we're going to start changing money from that to try to solve this. And then our assets are going to decline. We're going to be in a state where we need another special levy in the future to try to bring those things up that we're no longer maintaining. I'm just simply going to call it what it is. The federal government and provincial government are letting municipalities, municipalities struggle with this. And we're debating, we're spinning ourselves circles, trying to solve something that we have to be honest with ourselves. We simply cannot solve. We will not fix this. Kudos to Mayor Patterson on this for trying to set up regional councils and all that to get municipalities to work together more like city-states of the old kind of Greek and Roman times where, you know, if higher levels of government weren't working together, lower levels came together to try to fill those gaps. We have to be honest. We, we are literally taking money from people who cannot afford it to try to help people who don't have money to afford things. So it's like, we're not fixing anything here at this special levy. I think it actually in turn is like making life more, you're trying to help one group by making it more unaffordable for another group. So I'm going to support this amendment because we can always bring it back if we deem that that's appropriate. I think staff can get pretty creative, but we also have to realize we're working within limited resources and we as a city. You know, our taxpayers are obviously already feeling the pressure and we have to learn to live within our means and we have to be honest and just simply start telling people, I'm sorry, as a municipal councillor, I cannot solve that. We cannot solve that as a city. We need people to go and put pressure on the other levels of government to solve these problems. And we need to just be honest with them and say, that's not like, it's, it's, it's not that it's not our job. It's, we don't have the resources to do this. We are doing everything we can. And, and now we're going back to that idea pool and trying to brainstorm new ones. We have a very intelligent city staff. If there was a magic silver bullet here, I'm sure we would have stumbled upon it by now. So we're trying to come up with all these new ideas and rehash and, and sort of rebake things that have already been in there. And what it is, is we simply lack the funding to make meaningful change from the other levels of government and the commitment from them. So this is a call out to them. Do your jobs. We're trying to do ours. Look at our streets. We still have potholes that are not being plugged. Like we're, we're trying to do the basic things. And, and we're not even able to do that perfectly. So until we can do those things perfectly and put our funding there where people expect it to go, how are we going to solve a housing crisis? Thirty seconds. Sorry. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Sorry. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Uh, thanks. Next is Counsel Tozo.
Thank you, your worship through you. It's been three years and I still don't know how to unmute myself now. Uh, so I appreciate your patience. Um. So I'm going to vote against uh the amendment uh because of one thing that I think I have a record of it is not liking the strong mayor powers. I put forward the motion against it with all due respect, your worship. I'm still opposed to the strong mayor powers. It's the reality of what we live in and we're going to have to sort of live with the changes that happen at the provincial level. Um. Two is my other philosoph, is my other point is that I like information. Um, and I kind of spoke to that a few weeks ago when it came to another information report, but I think I'm going to just elaborate a bit further. Uh, I'm a big fan of asking for the most information possible and then fighting over the policy. I'm a fan of casting a wide net, seeing what fish are brought in, and then having us politicians fight over the fish. Um, I want to get as much information as possible on this issue. I heard two issues at the door. Uh, something Counseler Bowman spoke about affordability and uh housing. I I think we owe it to our citizens. I kind of take the other route where we owe it to our citizens to get as much information as possible and then let the politics come in and actually have a good political fight over the information. Um, Counselor Oosterhoff said many times ago, and I really do uh take that to heart, is we can't get in the kitchen. Well, we also can't dictate so specifically what we are ordering from that kitchen. We need to be able to give staff the largest mandate to provide information as possible, and then we have to make those policy decisions. So I'm going to vote against this motion. That you're going to hear this a lot from me over the next three years. I want as much information as possible, and then as politicians, it's our responsibility to fight over the policy. So that's where I stand on this, and I've encouraged my my fellow councillors to vote uh down this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Counsel Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Um, I actually feel similarly similarly to Counselor Tozo in this case. I think we're actually getting our ahead of ourselves here and we don't actually have these decisions to make. And I think that these are important debates, like the things that are coming out are are critical and we need to talk about this, absolutely, and we need to debate this and we need to look at it big picture um and how this is impacting our constituents. But the reality is we need affordable housing. We need money. And what are the options available? And it doesn't mean, you know, to sort of borrow Counselor Tozo's kitchen uh metaphor here, you don't, you don't need to order everything, right? Like, we just need to see what's available and we're going to make a really good and thoughtful decision about what the best move is for our residents. We're not going to to make some sort of carefree choice. Um, so I think that uh Counselor Glenn, it was you earlier on as well, who was talking about you. You need all the information and you're not going to like all of it, but it's it's all critically important to give you the context to make those difficult choices. Um, I'm also wondering, uh, this might be a question for staff or Mayor Patterson, I'm not sure, but I'm wondering if if we had all this information, like right now, I agree with Counselor Bone that this is not really our thing. This is other levels of government need to be contributing more, and part of what Mayor Patterson's been doing on behalf of the city is trying to advocate to get more funding and more partnerships. And I'm wondering if a report like this that outlines all the options and the impact that this would have on our residents, if that might be another tool that you could use as evidence to point to to say, hey, we need funding because without funding, look, like this is what we're going to have on the table for people, and this is not okay. They they will not accept this and and this isn't good enough. So um, could this possibly, this report possibly be a useful tool in advocacy work?
I I think um I I hadn't thought of it that way, Counsel Stephen, but as I as I consider it, I think it certainly wouldn't hurt. Um, I'd have to think about how we might be able to use that, but but yeah, I would say that probably having the more information, if there's a pool of information that we could draw from to help build our advocacy case, then certainly we would want to do that.
Mm hmm. Okay, thank you. So I think where I stand on this is I I completely respect and understand what people are saying about the levy and the taxes and um, I get it, people don't want to pay more, but I think we owe it to ourselves and to the public to get all the information and then make a really good informed decision. So I will be voting against this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair, please?
I will, Mayor Patterson, and I recognize you.
Thank you. This has been a very interesting debate and conversation. So there's just a few things that I would like to to share and perhaps remind counsel as well. So the first thing I want to just quickly address is the strong mayor power issue. So you'll know that um earlier this summer, I delegated a number of strong mayor powers back to council and to staff. That was a vote of confidence in all of you and in staff as well. However, there is a strong mayor power that I cannot delegate, and that is the power, it is now a duty and responsibility of mine to present the budget to council. So that can't be changed. I that's a responsibility I now take very seriously. And so that's why I have directed staff um to prepare the budget and I provided um some guidance, some direction to staff. Um, one of those directions is that the next budget should have one of the lowest property tax increases of any large city in Ontario with an absolute cap of three point five percent. And do you know where that number came from? I didn't pull it out of a hat. I took it from you guys. You unanimously voted for a three point five percent cap. So rather than going my own direction, which I could have done as with my strong mayor powers, I decided to go with your lead as counsel. So that's the direction that I provided to staff. That's why you heard say C A O hurdle in her response to the question earlier, that if there was any type of levy, it would have to fit within the existing month, which means if you want more money for affordable housing, you'd have to take money away from something else. Hmm. And that is actually something that I've directed staff to do because, again, our council strategic plan, which all of you voted for, was to make affordable housing one of our priorities. And that means probably devoting some resources toward that. Uh, so that's what a priority is. It means that you spend more money on something at the expense of something else. So really, what the direction to staff means is I've directed staff to spend more money on affordable housing, more money on fixing roads, more money on a few other priorities that we identified in council, and conversely, spending less money on things that we did not identify as priorities. So really, the discussion is really, well, there's already given me more money in the budget for affordable housing. So I'm sorry if that is a spoiler alert for you guys, but that's something that I've already directed to staff because that is what is our priorities. The issue is how does that, how is that packaged? Is it going to be money for an affordable housing project? Was it going to be a percentage of revenues from growth that would be directed into affordable housing? Do we call it a levy as part of the one percent on infrastructure that part of that goes to affordable housing? Well, that's still an open question that we're wrestling. So that's why I find this conversation really fascinating, because I think I thought that we'd already made this decision, that A, we were going to hold taxes as low as possible, and B, we were going to put money towards affordable housing. So to be honest, I could care less whether or not the amendment passes or not, because I've already provided that direction to staff. I feel very confident with the direction I've given because it was the direction you guys gave me. So at the end of the day, um, I'm I'm interested in the discussion, but I can assure you, no matter what comes back, um, we are going to have one of the lowest property tax increases of any city in Ontario. It will be a cap of three point five percent, and there'll be more money for affordable housing, and we'll work out the details of what that financial tool will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I return the chair to you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on my list is Counsel Shenanee.
Hi. So I don't have as much of a passionate speech, but um, yeah, I I just look forward to fighting over fish with the Counselor Tozo, but um what I really like is what Wendy said about impact and seeing what the impact could be um of all the options and I would not want to raise taxes and like Mayor Patterson just said, we, there's a cap at three point five and I have a feeling no matter what, it's probably going to be three point five because there's a lot of ambitious things that are in the budget. Um, but I I fear that removing that option, it may also remove the one percent, taking a portion of the one percent capital levy that's already there. Um, so that one is already being, it it's a levy that's there no matter what. That isn't going to change, I don't think. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe uh staff could speak to if it would or would not affect um the ability to look at that one percent capital levy that's already there, if we could take the portion of that, if we remove that from the the uh the motion.
Let's see, oh, hurdle.
Thank you and uh through you, Mr. Mayor. So um, you're correct, Counsel Shenanee, is that we have currently a one percent infrastructure levy. Um, so again, the fact, depending on how council defines levy, it could limit our ability to redirect a portion of um of doubt those funds and assign them specifically to affordable housing. Which is why I think having a broader language helps staff to bring back all options, and that's where council can debate them and discuss them and identify the ones that they would like us to implement.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I won't be supporting this because I'd like to have all the options and debate and discuss. Um, and I wouldn't want to take away from the option of um, taking it, redirecting us, maybe a small portion of the one percent capital levy towards affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Shapes.
Thank you. Um, I'm also not in favor of raising taxes overall. We already talked about the three point five percent. And I do believe last year we were the lowest, if not one, the lowest tax rates in all of Ontario. So I do believe that we can continue with that this year. Um, I also agree that it really isn't our responsibility. It should be the provinces and the federal governments. However, they're not stepping up at this point in time, and uh we can't just stand back and not do anything. Uh, we do need more affordable housing uh with the hopes that uh maybe some of those in transitional housing have someplace to go. And then those in shelters have someplace to go in transition housing. It's start now starting to become an issue, my district, with encampments throughout through causing issues with residents. Um, so and I do agree that more information is better. So I I want uh carrying on with some of the other and and attitudes here. I want to have the full menu to uh to read through and uh check off what I want to order and uh see what's best for the city as a whole. So um I want to give the uh city staff the opportunity to uh come back to us with a full report. And uh then we can decide as to what we don't or do or do not do. So uh I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is Counsel Asail.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, and through you, I was uh patiently waiting and hearing the comments. I I always appreciate uh our senior colleagues uh for for their experience and sharing their thoughts on many of the issues. Uh, within the time as a politician, as we grow and we have the experience and, you know, we serve uh our communities through the different platforms, the governments from longer time. We get the skill to twist the words and create, able to create the fear mongering statements uh for for the public. Um, in this uh, the motion, I don't see what's wrong with just have that option open to look at it. As the Counselor Shif said, if the report come back and we are not comfortable and we see the taxes going up, we can word it down that that option. But not having that option, I will echo a counselor Chinani, that might we will close the option to just explore more opportunity to see where we can uh have the funds to invest more into the this direction. The homelessness and the housing shortage is not getting um down or we not eliminating it. As every day when I go to my uh workplace, I see at least four or five people uh having camps or tents around my restaurant, and that is in 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 the commercial area. And now I have spotted some people are living in the um in my neighborhood where I live in 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 the bushes. So it is spreading all over. So fighting that is is not our job. I'm agree with the Counselor Boom and Counselor um um uh Ustrav, it's not our job, but how we can fight, but closing all the option, not doing anything is will not reduce the issue. It's it's will not um help the, help us to fight the to come, sorry, to fight away with with this issue. So I don't understand why we are debating on this one just only over the one word from last thirty minutes. And creating a fear among the community that is going to take us down for such percentage, the rent and the oh, sorry, the tax and the rental will be suffer and the homeowner will be suffer. It's just the information. When information report come, we can word it down easily. That's a, you know, we don't want to have a levy. But again, they are seniors, they have more experience, they they are much more stronger uh to twist the words uh for for, you know, in into the different direction, and they are also able, more able to create a fear among the community. We have to work together for for such issues. It is not only our issue, or it's not only for the federal government, it's not we blaming on all the government, federal blaming on the provincial, provincial blaming on the federal, and the both government blaming on the municipality, and now we are blaming on each other or on the other government. Why we just don't work together? So I will thank you for the Mayor Patterson for explaining and the CEO hurdle for for explanation. I definitely, I will word it down this amendment.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? If not, Counsel McCleary, you have the last word.
Thank you. So it sounds like this is not going to go through, but I want you to consider a few more points than we, okay, let's start with what you said, um, Mr. Mayor. You don't care which way it goes. You don't see an issue here. Those were your words. Um. If you're wrong, there could be an issue here, but let's deal with the other issue that was brought up about four times by several councillors. More information is always better. That's not the case. We have a limited amount of time to debate this at the next time, and if we have uh seven options, it's less time per option to debate that. You take one out because that's what we're supposed to do. We act like thieves to take out the things that we do not want. The analogy that was made was with a menu. If you are, for example, um if you can't eat certain things, it doesn't matter what's on the menu. You know that you will not be looking at certain parts of the menu. That's part of what we do when we vet our information. We know right now that a levy is going to cost somewhere. It's either going to be uncontrolled or it's going to be controlled by taking it away from something else. We heard on one hand, that there will not be anything higher than three point five. Yet at the same time, we also know that we cannot control the amount that the ambulance gives or charges us, right? We have um no representation but taxation. So if they give us um a four percent, that's going to be taken out from something else, or we have to raise taxes. That could be something in the core of our of our duties such as roads. Whatever it is, it's going to be there. So what we are asking you to do here is look at the information that we have now and vet it. We do not know what the other eight things that were are going to be in the report, but we do know that a levy is without this amendment, it's going to be there. Do you want to increase taxes? If you agree with increasing taxes, then vote this thing down. According to the mayor, it doesn't matter one way or the other. You did say that. For you, it doesn't matter. If he's right, then it doesn't matter. But if he's wrong, and I suspect that this is a dangerous precedent that we're going through and that it is our job to vet information, put some away, especially now, because we're having this debate on taxes now. If we want to have this debate again, when this comes back, then we're taking away the time, because you only have five minutes, on the other issues that may or may not be palatable for you. The point of having debates and spreading them out over time is to be able to debate them fully as opposed to imposing. Um, however, many numbers are going to be debated at one time. So this is the issue before us now. Are you going to be okay with an increase in this taxes or the alternative, which we've been presented as equally likely, the reduction in some of our other core services to do this? That's the issue here. So consider this. Um, one of you guys were saying that it's okay to take away from the capital levy to house homelessness, right? The quick question to staff, how much are we gaining from one year from a one percent cut capital levy?
Ms. Kennedy.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, one percent capital levy is about additional two and a half million dollars.
How many buildings can we build with two and a half million dollars to house people?
See you, hurdle.
Thank you and uh through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think councillor McLaren, that depends on the type of partnership that we can establish. As you saw tonight, the investment that the city made was actually fairly limited for the outcome uh that we were able to gain. So it all depends on the type of uh partnership that we can achieve.
Right, and that doesn't necessarily have to be with a levy. That's what the report that you're going to be coming with comes out with. Is that correct? You have at least eight. I think you had mentioned at least six of them, and I know that I've talked with the uh the treasurer about at least eight different strategies that we can use to do that without having to do a levy. So what I'm asking for is if we can do that with these other strategies without hurting our core services such as roads and infrastructure, which if we don't repair, get more expensive to repair at a later date, it strikes me that this is the time to vet it out. Um, sorry, I was going to ask you a question, but I forgot what it was. My apologies. The point that I'm trying to say is if we're gonna if we're gonna sacrifice some of our core services for things that we can get in another way without this levy and be making housing more affordable or making it less unaffordable for people who are already housed, this is a good thing. That's why we want to do this. Another thing, it's it's not so much about what we want. I mean, you can't have everything on the menu. That's using the name, the menu analysis analogy, um, you're not going to order everything on the menu. This is the time to vet it. You vet one page. If you don't want that, you go to the other one and you concentrate on that. That's where you put your thought into it because otherwise you're not putting in enough thought for everything. This is how we, this is how we this is how we think things through. You need time to do that and some things can be wiped out right off the top. Um, and this is one of them that should be. So the idea of uh always having more information is always better. No, we need to cut it out as we go along, as we get closer to a decision. That's why decisions happen in particular timeframes. This is the time to cut one of those things out so that we can discuss the other ones more wholesomely in the future. If you vote against this motion, you're essentially saying we're okay to cutting core services or increasing taxes on people.
Okay, I'm gonna have to just uh bring it to close there. Thank you, uh councillor. Okay, so at this point, we will take the vote on the motion to amend. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and that loses by a vote of five to eight. Had uh councillor Bohm, Glenn, McLaren, Osterhoff and uh Losanik in the minority. Okay, so we are now back to the uh original motion as not amended. Um, councillor McLaren uh has spoken. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the uh to the main motion? Councillor Glenn.
Um, thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I'm going to now speak to, I guess, the confusion that I have about the motion in its entirety. And that is the fact that with the strong mayor powers, you could bring all of this anyway. So, to me, this is moot. You're able to bring this. You're able to bring those strategies. You're able to present the the budget. So you've made it clear that your intent is already there for this. Um, so that's one of the things that I found fundamentally difficult when I read this. Um, I am all for increasing funding where we can and when we can for affordable housing. Um, I am in favor of more information, but I'm assuming you would have brought that as well. Otherwise, you wouldn't support this motion. Um, so I have a couple of um quick questions. One, in this motion, I want to clarify that when we're asking for financial tools and options, is this report going to include other options that are non-financial?
Uh, so question to staff, the way the motion is written, would staff interpret this direction as including other non-financial options as well? See you.
Thank you and and through you, Mr. Mayor. So we would look at um anything in terms of benefits that we could contribute to affordable housing. But I I do have to indicate that ultimately all of those will have a value. So even if we talk about contributing land, although there may there may not be an actual cost to the taxpayer of doing that, there's still a value to the land because otherwise we could sell it and make generate a revenue and reinvest that in something else like pools, for example. But if we, you know, if we are going to contribute that land, um it's not something that's coming from the tax. So we would be looking at all these tools and bringing that back to council and identifying obviously which ones would be generated through additional funding that's coming into the city and which ones would be contributed as a what I would call in kind, but there's a value to it as well.
Thank you. Um, so I guess where I'm going to go from here with this is to speak to the fact that I think we need to also wrap our heads around the strong mayor powers with regards to the budget and the potential for veto. So, you know, we all need to get a better understanding of this. I think in what I've heard on the floor so far, there seems to be this belief that we're going to be able to choose. And this is said with respect, Mayor Patterson, because I don't think you have any ill intent and I think you're going to do the best you can for the city. But again, the precedent that we are setting is that we believe that we actually have um this kind of control and we don't. That's been taken away from us um by the strong mayor powers. Uh, so I I think I I would like to make sure that we're all clear on that. Um, I've given this a great deal of thought. I've listened to the arguments because I believe in the benefit of bringing information and I have made it very clear that um I believe in information reports. I'll vote for this this time. However, I hope that everybody will remember the spirit in which this vote is being made. And that is that we always seek to get that information so that we can have those discussions. Um, so with that said, um, I'm just going to encourage my fellow councillors to read up on how this budget process is going to roll out so we can do the best job possible in working with the mayor on it. Um, and uh hopefully we can get a few small gains for housing along the way. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is Deputy Mayor Osterhoff.
Yeah, I just um thank you, Mayor Patterson. Um, it is an interesting debate. I I do think councillor McLaren actually said it quite well and I will not try to repeat it, but um I I like everything about this. I'm absolutely supportive of uh more information and discussion, and I do not think there is any fear in any of our conversation here. So I want to make that very clear. It's about being realistic and representing our constituents well. So and and being as clear as we can be on that. So um, you know, I I just, I just have a hard time with the four words, including a special levy. So I can't support it because I do not support a special levy. But if it loses, fine. But we will remember this conversation and like councillor Glenn just said, we need, we better understand the spirit of this because we're going to have a robust conversation again in a few months when it comes forward. And I know staff will do a good job. But to me, um, I think that um we need to do more with uh and continue the um vigorous discussion with provincial and federal uh and reminding them of their responsibilities. And I believe our our citizens, I I believe Kingstonians are watching and they will not be pleased. I believe that. And uh a special levy is unacceptable to me. Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Chinani.
Um, yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't see this, supporting this motion in this form uh means that we support raising taxes. Um, I just want to read the report and see what the options are for the tools um that we can use and so we can balance it without being at a detriment to other things necessarily. So I don't believe there's a precedent being set here either. So I'm going to support this. I look forward to reading the report and getting all the information and I I can say I don't support raising taxes, but I'd like to see what kind of impacts things can have. Um, I like to see the options of this and seeing like, and also the public could see, you know, this is to fund this, you these are the options and raising taxes could be an option, but not an option that I would support taking. But just to see like what the options are and what the tools can be and and then we can have that discussion and then hopefully pick something that will really work well for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship and through you. Um, I do, I do think there's lots of good things here. And uh if councillor or former councillor Neil is watching, uh he'll probably uh give me a text message later on because I'm going to do something here. And I'm going to do it to represent all those people who, I mean, around this table, I've yet to hear a single person say they that they're in favor of increasing taxes. So I can't understand why we have special levy in there if nobody's in favor of it. It's like saying give me an option that we've all stated we won't use, but still give me the option. And to follow councillor McLaren's line of reasoning, if you're gonna spend time on an option that nobody seems willing to use, you're spreading the resources that you have and you're having them look into something that we've all pretty much declared we're not really interested in using. So you're asking for information that's kind of moot in the first place. So why not spend staff's time looking into the other things a little bit more deeply? That's just some thinking there and I'm probably shocked everybody by quoting councillor Neil and uh I think councillor McLaren in that answer. But with that, I I am going to actually vote against this and that's just to take us and that we have to draw the line in the sand somewhere on taxes. And however you look at this, if you say, well, we're not going to have a special levy. Okay, fine, because it sounds like there's no support for that around this table. But what we could do is we could take money from somewhere else. So we may not have a special levy on on housing affordability or homelessness or or whatever today. But if we're taking money from something else, however creative we get, what we're really saying is that at some point we'll need to shore up those finances. So let's say we take point five percent from our from our infrastructure levy. Well, that means that that point five percent will not be spent where it should be spent. So that means at some point we will have to pay that debt and it does get more expensive as we go. So inadvertently, what we're doing is we may say we're not raising taxes here for special levy because we're going to take money from this to move it there. But at some point, we're going to have to reclaim that money that we just shuffled. So we're just moving money around. There there's no more money. We don't, we didn't plant a money tree to solve homelessness or or housing affordability. So the reason I am going to vote against this and and it's nothing personal, it's because at some point we have to take a stand and we have to tell people we can't solve this. I said it before, we need people to go and put the pressure on the other levels of government to stop turning a blind eye to this and to stop watching municipalities struggle with this issue and and not provide the proper funding. For years, they've been downloading, 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 and we've been getting more and more creative. At some point, we just run out of creativity. I mean, ran out of money, you know, through the pandemic. We're in a worse position than we've ever been in all my time in council and we're trying to do more with less. And the other levels of government are watching us struggle and they're happy to have 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 us have this debate so that people turn to us to try to solve it. And I just, I just can't tell people anymore. I have to be honest. I just have to say we can't solve this at our level. We can't. We didn't create it and we can't solve it at our level. We would love to. Trust me, we could, we would if we could, but nobody here has three hundred million dollars to go and build all these units. And this doesn't even go to the whole other thing about how hard it is to actually develop anything in Kingston because there's a lot of red tape and a lot of community groups that unfortunately through whatever their intentions are, usually, you know, they're they're honorable ones, but they actually make developing things harder. So on one hand, we have, we need more houses, but we have a very undeveloper friendly city in some regards. And on another, now we're talking about a special lovely that nobody seems willing to actually implement. So for all those reasons, I'm going to vote against this, even though I know that it's coming from a place of just seeking more information. And I'll be that one that takes that stand and for the Kingston taxpayer to say, you know what, enough is enough. We can't shift money around to solve this and we can't raise money to solve this. This is something that's going to have to be solved at a higher level. We've already done all we can. At some point, they have to admit that this is beyond us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Tozo.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Um, I just also uh wanted just that that this has been a very interesting debate and I'm going to vote in favor of the motion because again, I vote in favor of all motions to get all information. And I'm really curious to see what financial tools we have available to us to deal with this issue. Um, I knocked on doors probably for about five months last year. And again, one thing I heard was affordability is an issue. And I think as councillor Hassan said quaint intelligently, um, housing and homelessness and housing affordability is a major issue. I want to know what tools the city has that hasn't been explored entirely. And like, let's be very clear about what needs to be put in place first of all. So the information will come back to staff. It'll go through the mayor who has to then present as a budget as per the strong mayor powers. And then council will then use the appropriate avenues through thoughtful discussions of policy to be able to do that. Um, I think that that's a fulsome discussion that I'm really looking forward to having. Uh, it looks like in January when we all come back. Um, and I look forward to this report and having all the information so that we can represent our citizens um appropriately. And I would just add uh to a comment that was made earlier uh with my friend named colleague councillor Bohm. I think we owe it to our citizens to explore all avenues. I think they elect us to to take a look at every possibility that we can possibly do to address a housing crisis. And if there's a tool or in a toolbox that we haven't looked at yet, um, we owe it to them to be able to look at that. So I am going to support this motion and I'm looking forward to reading it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Amos.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and through you. Um, I want to recognize the spirit of this motion and I I've been listening for uh for well over an hour now on this debate. And and specifically councillor Glenn uh made a comment about the spirit of the motion and and clearly understanding where that's going and and I appreciate those comments and 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 all the all that insight that's been offered. For the past four weeks, I've been wandering um through most of my uh neighborhood, having trying to uh my neighbor, my district, trying to have conversations with uh some of our, some of my district uh neighbors. And a lot of the comments are around affordable housing and their children not being able to afford affordable housing of of any kind. So um when I saw that this information report was coming forward, uh, that's what triggered me to say, okay, this, this is um this is matching what my constituents are asking and trying to figure out for their own children. Uh, it's more affordable housing uh for them. So in the spirit of that, and uh I I want to see the full report and then go from there. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sile.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, but once again, uh and through you, um, I will support this motion and I just want to say say a few things. Uh, thank you again, my uh senior colleagues for for their concerns and their their comments about it. But again, uh as as a junior, as a new and, you know, the learning this process and the system, how it's working, I am still unable to understand where in this motion has been said that we must need the levy. It's an option to explore. We don't have to debate when uh the the budget come on if if we see the levies coming up just for the housing. We don't have to debate. We just word it down. And as as the councillor or um as a part of this um council, if I see that we are taking money from some something important, what we have to fight such as as uh repairing the roads or the parks, the infrastructure. And if if we take money from there and putting into the the destruction, then I will measure that which one was the more more important. And I will vote against it. I will have all my options open to vote against it when it's come to the budget. But we don't have to spread the fear into the community that I don't know what we're trying to accomplish here. It's just a single word say is possibility if we need the levy, what kind of levy we're going to have. We are not opposing or we not supporting any any kind of law. Either the first councillor, if if we increase the budget and this levy come up, special levy for the housing, I will word it down from myself, you know, the from from my side. But let us for God's sake to explore the options. Just see all the options. I appreciate all all of your spirit and and your good attention on on your way. But I think again, this is something we have to work together. This is the issue is I want to be happy to driving uh on on the street or on the road, well paved, well repaired. And on the side of the road, it's a tents, is a homeless people, you know, throwing bottles and and sitting on it and cooking on it and drinking on it. And I will not be able to take my children in the downtown if I have a whole a lot of homeless people sitting up there. And I get this comments every day from my constituents. They say they don't like to go to downtown anymore. We need to clean it up more, but how are we going to do it? Are we going to wait long for the federal government and provincial government, did they come? And and fix it? They haven't done that yet. And I have some senior council on the on on the council. They've been on the council for many years. But they have done so far. Every year, we we fight over increase the budget, increase the budget, or not not increase the budget. But we are not fighting for, they have not done enough for the uh, road, sorry, our infrastructure, our road condition, our traffic condition is just only debates, debates, debates. But I'm sorry for for my word, and uh, if anything I said, somebody will not like it. My apology. But I think it's time to work together. I will support the this motion to explore the more opportunity to see. And if I will not like it down the road, I will word it against. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I don't support the motion just because we didn't remove the word special levy. Um, I do like information reports, but sometimes you have to watch out about media spin. And already, like, word is out there that we're, you know, proposing a new tax. I got an email tonight while we were on break, and you know, I just, I don't want that perception to be there, um, because everyone's already so stressed out, residents, you know, um, interest rates going up. And now the talk might be that we're proposing a new tax. Um, I just want to steer away from that uh, for damage control because that's not what we're talking about. But that's unfortunately gonna be the headline tomorrow is that we're now considering a new tax for affordable housing. And as far as the infrastructure, the one percent infrastructure levy, you know, that is not where I want to see any type of money to go to affordable housing come out from. Because during the election in the West End, you know, infrastructure and potholes and, you know, keeping the roads in good condition was a very important topic. So um, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
Sorry, Mayor Patterson. Yes, I recommend you.
Thank you. Um, so I I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. Before I do that, uh, I'd like to propose what I hope is a is a somewhat of a housekeeping amendment. So when this motion was originally drafted, uh, we were planning to have our budget meetings at the end of November. And so you'll see that the information report uh, being requested by the motion is for November. I think, given now that we have moved the budget meetings to January, what I would suggest is it would be wise to give staff the additional time to then bring that information report in January to can coincide with the discussions we're going to have uh, at budget. So I I think that's what I would first like to do if I uh, if I could propose that uh, as an amendment that we could change November to January twenty twenty four. Um, and uh, if if there's a secondaire deputy mayor, um, happy to.
Yeah, I see Counselor Tozo seconding it, and do we want to vote on it? Uh, do you want to vote on that, Mayor Patterson, or just by common consent?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do that. All right, any discussions on that amendment? Okay, I think we all under, yes, um, Counselor Glenn.
Um, when are we proposing on bringing this? Because as we've noted, there's now apparently going to be a whole pile of options. Um, so sometimes when it's really close to the times that we're meeting, we don't have an as much time as I think some of us would really like to delve into this issue. So is there some sort of middle ground where we can get extra time to actually um, delve into that report and what it looks like before we have the formal budget discussions?
That's a fair question. Could we, um, yes, CL hurdle? Can you answer that?
Thank you and through you, Deputy Mayor. So what we can, uh, what we can do, Counselor Glenn, is we could look at issuing the the report a little bit earlier than the regular agenda so that would give you more time to review the material um, before the council meeting comes up, if if that works for you.
Um, I'd I'd certainly appreciate it. So I don't know how others feel, but that that would be something I'd appreciate so that we had adequate time to like give consideration to uh, to this. It's been a hot topic. We're concerned about taxes. I think it would also show that we're taking the time to do the due diligence um, to make good decisions when we get to to budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more um, questions or comments on the amendment on on time? Okay, can all in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? Seeing none, I return the chair to you, Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. So I'm I'm gonna ask if you could keep the chair, but if I could continue to to speak, that would be awesome. No, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, there's just a couple of things that I would like to say if I can. First, in my experience, um, we should never make decisions around this table based on media spin. We're leaders in this community, and quite frankly, it's up to love our partners in the media, but it's our job to to lead and make decisions and to communicate effectively what is in fact um, going on uh, and the direction we want to take the the community. So so I think that that's, I think that's important. The second thing I want to say is, and very well said, we cannot solve the issue of affordable housing ourselves. There's absolutely no way we could come even close to solving it. But let me say two things. Number one, I do believe that the reason why we as council in our strategic plan established affordable housing as a priority was because we felt it was important for the city to do something. So that when constituents do reach out to us, we can say, you know what? Yeah, there's so much more that needs to be done. We need upper levels of government to do their part, but here's here's what we're doing. And to be honest, if I could say this, as someone who is advocating constantly to upper levels of government for more funding for affordable housing, do you know what gets them to the table? Is when we put something on the table first. It's small. It's not in any way something that's gonna solve the problem, but it's very difficult for me to get the province and the feds to put money towards a project that we haven't initially started ourselves. What we do is we put in a little bit of seed money, just a little bit here and there. And then that enables us to then have a project that I can then take to upper levels of government in order to get that funding. So that's why in the coming budget, there will be some new investment in affordable housing because it's basically, how do we take our limited dollars, keeping in mind that we need more money for roads, keeping in mind, we want to have one of the lowest property tax increases of any city in a large city in Ontario, all these constraints, and we want to maintain all our existing city services, that that does mean we're not, we don't have a whole lot to work with. But what we can do is make sure that we leverage what we have in a really strategic way to be able to get those maximum dollars from upper levels of government. That's the strategy. That's what's gonna be in the budget. And again, this is, this is what I'm gonna present to council for for your consideration. I do also want to say, and I think it was Counselor Glenn that that made this point, but I I do want to say this. This does matter. Right? This strong mayor power that I have is not meant to exclude council from these discussions. It basically means my responsibility is to work with staff to sign off on a budget and to present it to council for consideration. So this information report is gonna allow you to evaluate what I've done with staff on the affordable housing front. And be able to, and you guys can judge whether I've made that right choice or not. And you, as council, will be able to propose amendments to the budget if you feel that I haven't used the right financial tool to advance affordable housing. So I'll be honest with you. I'm supporting, I agree to second this motion because it's out of respect for you as council, that I thought that this was an issue that wasn't important enough that you should have some input into. Right? I I could have just gone ahead and just worked with staff and just brought forward a budget that had some money with affordable housing. But I just wanted you to have this extra chance to 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 look at those tools and be able to to challenge what's brought forward.
I've always wanted to say this, thirty seconds.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Stephanie Mayor. Well, I better wrap up my comments then. Thank you. So with that, I I'm happy to to support the motion. Um, but we'll uh, we'll look forward to to seeing what information comes back, and we'll have lots of great discussions in the twenty twenty four budget. Thanks very much.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the uh, motion that hasn't spoken yet? Counselor Ridge, you have the last word.
Thank you. Your worship and through you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank uh, everybody on council for this lively debate, the spirited discussion. I think this has been a fantastic conversation, and I think it's the beginning of a conversation that's gonna move forward as we get closer to budget period, regardless of whether it's about this particular topic or on other topics and other priorities. So it's a, it's it's ten sixteen, so I'll keep my comments short. I just wanted to thank everybody again. Thank you for your support for the motion and uh, for making your ideas very clearly expressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote on new motion number one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of nine to four. Counselor Sannick, Bohm, Osterhoff, and McLaren opposed. Okay, we have no other new motions on our agenda. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to minutes, please.
Moved by Councilman McLaren, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, that the minutes of City Council Meeting number twenty two dash twenty twenty three held Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty three be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, uh, we have some communications. Is there any other business? With that, Madam Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Losanik, seconded by Counselor Ridge, that bylaws two and five through eight be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor Losanik, seconded by Counselor Ridge, that clause twelve point six three of bylaw number twenty twenty one forty one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw seven three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
And moved by Counselor Losanik, seconded by Counselor Ridge, that bylaws one through eight be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Son, seconded by Counselor Bohm. All those in favor? Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great evening.